It's the, it's the outside. The AC. It's the, it's the outside. The AC.
Okay, we're streaming. Mm hmm. Yes.
I'm sorry, is someone talking? I cannot hear you.
Oh, okay.
Make sure your mic's on.
Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for May twenty third, twenty twenty three. Please be reminded that no public testimony is permitted during the review session.
Before we start, I just want to again mention that we are transitioning to hybrid mode and person to the executive order, which is still in effect.
Okay, we'll begin with zoning calendar, continued hearings, item number twenty two, twenty twenty one, seventeen B C, eighty seven nineteen Rockaway Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, just give me a second. The initial hearing on this application was held on March twenty eighth. The applicant has submitted its response to the comments that were made by the board, including proof of continuous use that has been provided. And so my question is, the applicant is proposing to remove the air pump and replace it with a vacuum machine. And it was my understanding, and I think it's our board understanding from previous cases, that New York State requires an air pump to be located in gasoline service stations with certain number of dispensers. So they should look into that before they propose to remove the air pump. I have other question, which is, we had questions about the drainage system, given that there is going to be a car wash, self-car wash system put in place. I mean, it is already existing, but the applicant is proposing to retain it. So the question was about the drainage and if the existing drainage would be adequate. The applicant seemed to have revised the plan and has enlarged the existing drainage for catchment. I'm not sure if that's a proper location and if that would be adequate. With regards to the fencing, the applicant is proposing to provide chain link fence with, with slats. It is not clear from the plan if the fence is going to extend all the way beyond to the proposed trash enclosure. Or if it isn't going to even go behind the trash enclosure, it's not very clear. I don't know how much space there is between the trash enclosure and the property line. It seems there is a gap between the abutting building and the property line, so I just want some clarification on that. Indicate on the plan, the parking space that will be ADA accessible. It's not marked on the plan. A ten, ten inch deep planting bed is being proposed for in-ground planting for eight foot high arboretum. I do not believe a ten inch deep planting bed is going to be adequate for such a height of arboretum. And I looked at the websites and it seems the minimum depth that would be needed for such a kind of planting would have to be at least minimum four feet deep. So the applicant needs to revise the plan and show the proper depth for an eight foot high, height, high arboretum. I also wanted to know what is the proposed timeline that has been proposed for completing all the improvements? The applicant is proposing to amend the hours of operation for the gas station from six A M. Ten A M. to ten P M. to a twenty-four hour operation. And the air pump and self-car wash will be operating from eight A M. to eight P M. seven days of the week. My question is, who is responsible for maintaining and supervising the air pumps, the car wash and the vacuum? And what, why is, and what are the hours of the auto repair? Is that also, or does that also operate for seven days of the week? And is vacuum machine was not mentioned, but is that also another one of the machines that would be on a time limit? I had a question regarding the lumen analysis, and that is, did the lumen analysis factor in the light level from the proposed canopy? If the gasoline service station will be operating twenty-four seven, then I want to make sure that it has been factored in and the lumen spread from the proposed canopy will not affect the abutting residential building. So based on the recent photos that's been provided, it seems, this is second comment, based on the recent photos that's been provided, there are auto parts that are stored outside the building. And the auto parts must be kept at all times within the building. And I would say some of the proposed improvements that the applicant is stating, it would be good if those can start now. Those are my initial comments. Vice Chair Shabata.
Thank you, Chair. From my understanding, they proposed that the convenience store will be open from six A M. to ten P M. seven days a week.
Yeah, your mic on?
Yes, it is. Am I not being heard?
Pull it up.
So it's my understanding that the convenience store hours will be from six A M. to ten P M. seven days a week. They also stated that they are not removing the, they're not installing new tanks, they're keeping the old ones installed. And that is the only thing I'd like to add. They, they are proposing certain changes. I don't understand why some of those changes, as you stated, cannot happen sooner. Something as simple as putting a cover over the circuit breaker as required by code is something that hasn't been, hasn't been done yet. Also, from my understanding, the the banners that are hanging on the fence along eighty-eight street have still not been removed. These are things that don't require a great deal of work. I'm not sure why they haven't been, haven't, any steps haven't been taken towards it now. And that's all my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
So I have a question about the decision to install the corrugated metal trash enclosure. This applicant has suggested that on another case, and I just want to know why they are deviating from the board request that these be concrete, you know, or cinder block trash enclosures with steel doors. And my concern is that corrugated metal sometimes looks like garbage after a few years.
Good point. I, I think also in this case, the trash enclosure is going to be located right next to the self-car wash machine. So, but they should still
But concrete block?
Is pretty durable.
Yeah, it's durable.
And the corrugated metal will likely rust a lot sooner next to a car wash. I think it might be wise to make a note to the applicant community that corrugated metal is not ideal for trash enclosure.
And other than that, I, I thought their proof of continuous use was great. You know, with yearly photos. That was very good.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with your comments regarding the planting bed and the other comments. What I would add is two things. Number one, regarding the lumen spread, I do believe that that lumen spread is factoring in the lights from the canopy. If you look at the plan, it sounds like the computer model accounted for that. The other thing is the, the drains for the car wash. If you look at the plan view that they submitted, you can see kind of like the proposed trench drain is perpendicular to the sidewalk. If you look at Google view and I can save you Tom and just put this on the view, you can see that, that pitch for the existing grades is actually parallel to the sidewalk. There is no significant, if any, change in the grades. That the slope is mainly perpendicular to the sidewalk. If you look at the plan view, I do believe that the way the drain is configured, it's not going to be capable of catching or intercepting the flow that need to be intercepted. So I would, I understand they might have some limitation because of the existing underground tank. But if they can just reorient or like screw that drain a little bit, it's going to be very helpful in intercepting the flow out of that, out of that station. And I also do agree with the comment from Commissioner Brown regarding the trash enclosure construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I just wanted to add, the air pump is still shown on the plans. I didn't see it being removed. Or did I, maybe I missed something? Or maybe I'm looking at the wrong plan, but I suppose that's for the applicant to clarify that they are indeed removing the air pump.
Somewhere in the, one of the documents, either it's in the cover letter, it stated that, so I, I was
Yeah.
Just wanted a clarification. Okay.
Got it. Okay, okay. I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. Do I have a problem in sharing screen? Because when I shared my screen, it went off. Okay, so you, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Move on. Yes, let's move on to the next case.
Okay, item number three, twenty twenty one fifty-nine B C, one sixty-one oh nine Union Drive, Queens, was withdrawn yesterday. So we're now at item number twenty-four, twenty twenty-two seventy-nine B C, nine thousand Shore Road, Brooklyn.
I'm just scrolling through my notes. The initial hearing on this application was held on January twenty-fourth. The applicant has made a detailed submission in response to the comments that were raised at the hearing. First of all, a soft commitment letter from H P D dated May second, twenty twenty-three, has been provided for the proposed senior housing. So I think the proposal is to facilitated housing that would be funded through the SARAH program. And it is for household earning at or below sixty percent of area median income. There were, there was a lot of discussion around the parking lot operation and maneuver, maneuver, oh my God. Maneuver, oh my God, this is embarrassing. I practiced this at home today. Maneuverability.
Yay.
Well done.
I'm sorry. It's just my weakest word. And the study concluded, and the, the study was done, and they, it concluded that some of the changes that we were suggesting may not be viable. But they did look into it and did make some changes. So based on that, the applicant provided what they call an option two plan, which allows for more turning radii within the property for vans and drop-off vehicles. And, and it did also a very thorough analysis of nature, a kind of vehicles that come and serve the facility, not just the residents, but also the community center and various programs that it facilitates for its residents. So all the various automobile types, vehicular types were looked into and analyzed as to where the, where the current drop-off pickups are and how the proposed turning radius within the site would allow for many of these movements to be contained within the site, which I think is a big improvement, because this was a concern, significant concern we had heard also from the community and can, and containing lot of its operation within the site. There was also another question that was raised regarding the stormwater runoff parking. And in response to that, the applicant has provided more clarity. And this is not before the board, but I'm satisfied with the response and the applicant's responsiveness to the comments that were raised. And the reason I state that is because this is an as of right use with, with the density that is permitted under the zoning. What is before us is the parking reduction. So with regards to the parking, the applicant went ahead and did an additional survey that was conducted in March of this year, twenty twenty-three. And the March study distinguished between the authorized passenger vehicles, that is vehicles with authorized tags, and those without, without such tag that were parked on the side. And the study concluded that if these unauthorized users of the parking lot were removed, then the demand that was stated in the E A S in April of twenty twenty-two would be even less. So that basically shows that there is more supply than the demand currently. And therefore, the reduction in the parking would not result in a burden to the surrounding look, parking spaces, on, on-street parking spaces. A revised proposed plan, as I mentioned, has been submitted in response to these comments. And as I said, the option two responds to the surrounding queuing, loading, and all the servicing within the parking lot. It also includes a loading zone closer to the community center and is more centralized to the existing residents, which would use it for pickups and drop-offs. So with that, I would say the plan should specify the material and the height of the fence. And it should extend beyond the parking area. Right now, at least, maybe the plan has, it's, it I wasn't able to read it very clearly, but the, the fence should go beyond the parking area all the way up to closer to the community center. I believe the response that has been provided by the applicant is very thorough. It's responsive and has clarified the questions that were raised at the January hearing. And I would say of the two options, the proposed and the option two, option two addresses the comments that were raised during public hearing and response to finding A. It would improve the existing circulation along with improved landscaping and screening, improved trash storage and collection that will be consistent with the sanitation department's requirement and will also improve the infrastructure to minimize any runoff. So I'm very satisfied with this application.
I'd just like to remind members of the public that we're still in a review session.
Someone just raised a hand.
When the board concludes the review session, we'll begin the public hearing in which we will invite the applicant to respond to questions and engage with the board. Once the applicant and the board have concluded, we will invite the public to testify as part of the public hearing. Again, we are still in a review session.
Thank you, General Counsel. Vice Chair Shabata?
Thank you, Chair. I, I agree with your comments, especially with regard to option two. I do want to note that even though this is not part of our findings, I do appreciate the thirty-nine percent reduction of stormwater that they're proposing. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Perhaps the, our engineer can tell us whether or not he was satisfied with that calculation. Other than that, I have no other statements.
I think we should be, this, as I said, it's not before us, so I do not think it would be fair to put our engineer on the spot for
Fair enough.
Since that's not before us, that is really for an expert agency like D E P. And as long as it's consistent with D E P.'s regulations and requirements, and if it's going beyond that, that's up to them.
Fair enough, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
I found the submission to be very responsive, and I appreciate their re-looking at the whole parking situation and revising the parking study, and I have no other questions. I found it very responsive.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I will start with the last point, although it's not before us, the stormwater. I would like to mention that what was submitted this time is not just clarification from what was submitted last time. It was actually a change in the strategy and the way this site is being, the stormwater is being discharged. During the previous submission, it was proposed to construct one detention basin similar in size to the existing one. That means that more or less that the site would handle the, the stormwater drainage without reduction. But what is done in this submission is actually they added one more detention base. That being said, that means that, that it's, it's likely that the two detentions would result in a reduction. They indicated in their submission that the reduction in the outflow from the site would be on the order of forty percent. I cannot comment on that simply because we, it's not our scope and we don't have the, the resources to run the analysis. And I, I believe it should be done somewhere else. But at least I would say, yes, a reduction is anticipated in the outflow from the site. This is to, like, just to put this point to rest in peace for the stormwater issue. On, on the maneuverability, I noticed that they are indicating that the drive aisle to Colonial is twenty-one and a half feet. Looking at the plan, actually, I can clearly see that twenty-one feet is measured from the building wall to the curb on the other side. If you measure from the curb to curb, it's not twenty-one and a half, it's, I believe it's sixteen and a half feet. So I wanted them to look into that and probably correct it. It's not critical, but again, the accuracy of the information submitted to, to this board need to be like looked at. The, the other thing, I would comment on the screening of the parking and the trash enclosure. I noticed that there is no construction material specified for the trash enclosure on the drones. If we can specify that, that would be helpful. Regarding the screening, I believe the length that they are targeting screening is about one hundred forty-five feet. This is more or less the, the length of the parking. If they can add ten, fifteen feet to the right and to the left, I believe that would be very helpful in screening and, I would say, perfectly screening the, the parking view. Let me see if I have anything else. Yeah, regarding the parking, I'm, I'm satisfied with the, with the parking study and the conclusions in it. However, I, I do strongly believe that the conclusion is based on, like, an assumption that need to be satisfied in, in, during operation, which indicate that the unauthorized users will not be able to get to the site. If, if they can educate us how they're gonna make sure that this is gonna be the case, that would be helpful to.
I don't think that is, I, I think once the site starts construction as it is, that would make the most of the site not accessible for anybody other than those who live in the building.
True, yes. During construction, yes, but I'm talking about after construction and during that, like.
I, I, I don't think that is that, that is something that we need to consider. That's part of their operation plan, that they would be monitoring and making sure. I mean, they could put, put it in letter, an operational, as to how they would make, make sure that vehicular drop-offs and pickups are happening within the site. And, and the vehicle, only tagged vehicles would be used. But it, it, you know, you also have to realize there are going to be vehicles that will be coming like visitors who will be coming to see the family members or other professionals will be coming to the site, so.
I, I, I understand.
The number of parking spaces is allocated specifically for them. And maybe they can clarify it, but I don't believe that should be part of the rigor of our review, but they, they can answer the questions. I think that
My, my point was if they can provide like a narrative on the operation, how they're gonna like manage that, I, I believe that would do it.
Can I just jump in here?
Yes.
The purpose of a parking study is to ensure that this developer can accommodate their own parking demand on their site. And that if they could not, and this is not the case here, if they could not, then they would go on to talk about how they would be adequate parking within a quarter of a mile of the site. But in this case, they can take care of all of their parking demand onsite, and they even have availability to accommodate their staff as well as visitors at all times. And so I don't feel that they need to go any further to talk about whether or not they're going to stringently enforce the rules of who gets to park and who gets to visit. That should be left up to them to handle. It's not one of our findings. We should stick with our findings.
I'm, I'm not saying it's part of the finding. This is Commissioner Sheta. I'm not saying it's part of the finding. I didn't say it's a requirement. What I said is, if they can't provide that, it would be helpful at least to me to like make sure that there is, there are belts and suspenders there.
But are you going to ask for this for every single parking reduction? Because if you don't, then it becomes arbitrary and capricious that you're requiring this applicant to jump through hoops that you're not going to require every other applicant to do, which is why we try and stick to the findings as best we can.
That's a fair point. Yeah, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Hartley Brown. We are all agreeing that the parking study shows that there is more than adequate capacity to address the need of the proposed development.
Thank you. I'm done.
Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. I also found the response to be very thorough, and I wanted to have the applicant confirm. I saw in, I believe, the operational memo that option two, they believe option two would provide increased maneuverability, just to confirm that that is their preferred design option. Because all of the documents still reference fifty-six parking spaces, but option two actually provides fifty-seven. And so if option two is the preferred design, that everything, of course, in the application would need to be revised to reflect the accurate number of parking spaces. They also noted that they are committed, the applicant, to working with D O T. on providing a loading zone during the daytime hours on Colonial Road, which I think I'd like to know more about that process that they'll engage with D O T. on, because it does seem like it would be helpful to provide some loading area during those daytime hours at the front of the building and the street frontage, in addition to any loading areas interior to the site. And then I just wanted to pull up the operational plan where Commissioner Sheta was talking about the distance of the curb to curb versus the distance to the building. So I think this is what Commissioner Sheta was talking about, the twenty-one feet is measured from one side of the street to the, the building edge. And then there's another dimension of sixteen point one, which is curb to curb. But I believe these are meant to be shared, shared surface area. And this is where the applicant can confirm where there will be no curb between this sidewalk and this, this pavement. And I believe that's why they've indicated the twenty-one feet, but that would be good for the applicant to confirm that this would be a shared surface between the pedestrians and the cars in this portion, as documented in the landscape site plan. I can pull that up if that's helpful. Hang on a second.
Before we go any further, I just want for the record for all of us to be aware of what really the finding is that is before us with regards to section seventy-three, four thirty-four. And I'm going to read it out again, and the findings are that A, such reduction will facilitate and improve site plan. B, any new dwelling unit created on the portion of the zoning lot previously occupied by such parking spaces will be income restricted housing unit, which the applicant is proposing it will be. C, such reduction will not cause traffic congestion, which based on the site plan, a lot of thought has gone into it to bring in lot of the activities within the site. D, that such reduction will not have an undue adverse effect on residents, businesses or community facility in the surrounding area as applicable, including the availability of parking spaces for such uses. The, based on what the applicant is projecting, the parking demand, it would be all be contained within the site. And so I, I really would strongly advise that, that we all stick to these findings and make sure all our questions or comments are, are directly in response to that. And Um, and um I I think what the applicant has done in and they did seek an adjournment, but that was more to kind of do a much more thorough analysis more than what we would have asked for, because we were quite satisfied with the initial application um at the first hearing. Um, they're really being very responsive to all the questions and comments that we heard during the public review. Um, and I I am, I don't think it is in our um in our jurisdiction to ask how, you know, the 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 parking spa, the sorry, the, one of the questions that you were saying, um the along Colonial Drive, the additional, I I'm not sure that is something that we need to consider. That is between the applicant and it it's an as of right use and an as of right use can ask for a pickup drop off areas within its location and it can do it for current use also. Uh, because their study is clearly showing that all the operation and the parking need for this operation can all be contained within the site. And um so I I just want to caution the board members um when we are asking these questions that they are very, they're tied to the specific findings. And if we are asking question for clarification, let's be clear that it is not related to the finding. It is more for as an FYI type of thing. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Yun.
Okay, uh to clarify, the applicant did state that they were committed to working with DOT on providing a loading zone, so I was asking for some questions on how they plan to do that. But if you find that, I mean, I think that the site and it the traffic congestion is related to some of the loading that will happen, but and they mentioned it in their memo, but I understand what you're saying, so if you'd like to, for me to rescind that question, I I can. I was also just trying to provide some clarification on the shared surface that I believe they're proposing based on Commissioner Sheda's question, but I'll let the applicant clarify that. I have nothing further.
Okay. So the shared service is a question I remember I think we all had raised was uh in terms of the uh how would you ensure pedestrian safety within that uh area, right? Um, where the vehicles are parked and somebody's gonna walk by. And that's a clarification the applicant should provide as part of the overall site plan. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
When I spoke about the drive aisle, I didn't mean that it's impacting the operation onsite. What I meant is it might be a table, so I just wanted them to look at it and correct it. I thought they put twenty-one and a half instead of sixteen. Now regarding the findings, my understanding is that every single special permit has two sets of findings, ones that are related to the specific findings and there are something called general findings. And I do believe like a gas station, when a gas station has ten parking spots, we do ask the gas station owner to provide an operation plan to make sure that whatever cars he's fixing is gonna fit into the site. I I didn't ask for something that's that's not like not here though. I I believe I did ask for something that's very fair. And 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 it's within the findings, the general findings, I would say.
I would say that the general findings is not in a do I I often find specifically in these kind of uh sections where the findings are very clear. It's clearly documenting and telling us how to curtail our review and focus on that. Um, uh, I therefore stick to those primarily. And and that is the main context of it. In terms of the operational plan that you're asking for, you know, again, I this is a use that is permitted. This is a density that is permitted. Uh, the only element is a reduction of the parking spaces. And for that, they had to show what is the demand and what is the supply and will the demand be able to be achieved within the site. And clearly, the applicant has shown, as Commissioner Hartley Brown stated, that they are able to meet the requirements of the demand within the site. And the supply would be more than adequate. Um, so there might be, you know, there's there's enough space enough for everybody for the operators of the building, residents of the building, everybody that uses that facility. So when that is there, I, we ask for that operational plan in situations where we think it's upon. Are we all okay?
Yeah, that's like a vacuum that just slammed shut.
Um, so we generally ask for that when there is a conflict in the way the site is functioning and way um they are proposing. In this case, I do not see that conflict. Honestly, I do not see that conflict because the analysis is very clear in terms of what is the demand and what is the supply and and it can all be contained within the within the site. So therefore, I'm like, do not want to push on something that is not needed.
Okay. Understood.
Thank you. Okay, next case. Uh, any other questions or comments from the commissioners? I really do appreciate everybody's thorough review and uh feedback on this. Thank you.
Item number twenty-five, twenty-two, thirty-two BZ, four seven four Oakdale Street, Staten Island.
Um.
And just to remind members of the public, we are still in a review session.
I I'm just trying to pull up the drawing. I'm my apologies, it's just slowing a little bit down. Okay. All right, so the initial hearing on this application was held on March twenty-eight. Um, the outstanding element was related to findings C and D of zoning resolution section seventy-two dash twenty-one. Um, the applicant has provided a site plan of the proposed development and the existing buildings, abutting buildings. Um, and the distance between uh these existing buildings on these abutting lots. Um, I found it very helpful. Uh, and based on that, uh it shows the the thought has been put into the with the placement of the building. And given its irregular and uh and the depth of the site. While the proposed location of the home is responsive to its surrounding context and the proposed building, um, it does result in the reduction of in the front yard. Um, we had asked, I I know I had asked, um and possibly Commissioner Yun also, I'm not sure. Uh, the statement did not clarify if the building on lot eight was a pre-existing non-compliant uh regarding yards. And also, an explanation was not provided if the proposed building in the rear yard uh in the rear could have been situated ten feet from the rear lot line and maintained a required front yard. Um, uh, I think the statement that was made for finding D was very generic. It didn't get into the specific and that we were asking is, does by combining the two lots, does the site benefit? And if so, how? And and therefore reduces the degree of variance. Um, or does it anyway compromise the existing building? And if the existing building is illegally non-compliant and uh combining the site, does it you relieve it? Does it provide some relief? Um, so a front yard study was asked. That was not provided or even not discussed in narrative. Um, so I'm not, uh also, I'm not clear about the statement that was made, um and I'm quoting. Steed, the street profile is further removed than the existing lot line shed located on lot sixteen to the west of the subject site. Um, I think I know what it's being said, but it's not very clear, so I definitely want the applicant to clarify it. And maybe a diagram would be more helpful on this one. So with regards to finding D, um as I said, the statement did not expand on it as it was discussed at the hearing. Uh, while I see the reason why the building is being proposed to be situated where it is, now the the document is lacking in its narrative and and connecting the elements that were presented graphically, so that needs to be improved upon. Those are my comments, uh Vice Chair Shabata.
Well, thank you, Chair. I agree with your comments. I only would add that they also did not provide a a rear yard study. And they're seeking uh, they're seeking to waive the rear yard.
That's a good point, yes. That was also asked. Okay, Commissioner Hartley Brown.
You know, I remember the hearing and initially I had asked the question about the common ownership, but he answered it in hearing when he said that it was an owner in common, but the ownership of each lot was slightly different, two different whole entities, and I believe you opined on it in hearing as well.
That's right.
Commissioner, and so when I thought back about the hearing, I remembered that we asked it and it was addressed in hearing that it really was not a case of common ownership. I think one was a single owner and the other lot was an owner and their partner. And that that would be enough to prevent us from requiring one of those lots to accommodate the new development.
Okay. Ah, okay.
Would you like the applicant to submit on that for the record?
Yes. Okay.
I um, I have no questions for this case. I'm actually satisfied with the building and its placement on the lot. It makes sense, given the hardship of the shape.
So, um, yes, as thank you for that clarification and I therefore uh while I don't think the way I was leading the self-created hardship does not need to be responded, but the applicant should clarify the ownership um of the two sites and why therefore it is not considered uh uh self-created. Um, thank you, thank you on both. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I have nothing further.
Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. I agreed with your comments. I think in the absence of a front yard study, I was just looking in the Google aerials and um it does seem like it would be the only property outside of this shed that would be encroaching on the front yard. It'd be much easier to see if there was a front yard study provided, so we could get a sense of the context. Um, that being said, um, let's see what else I need to. I suppose I suppose that's it. There's a currently, there's a thirty-six foot minimum distance between buildings, between the building on lot eight and the proposed building. So if we were interested in reducing the front yard waiver so that there's something more like fifteen feet or twelve feet, you could potentially do that and still maintain a minimum of thirty feet between buildings back to back as an option. Um, again, a front yard study diagrammatically would be helpful as opposed to just referencing the adjacent sites. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. So you're suggesting moving the building back by five feet or so?
I'm saying it's possible. It obviously restricts the space where the pinch point is at the back of the building. Um, but it does appear that the rest of the block, the rest of the frontage along that block seems to be set back consistently. It would be again easier to see that if it were provided diagrammatically uh or if there were any exceptions to that perception that I have based on just walking through Google Maps.
Okay, diagrammatic. Okay, I agree. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Item number twenty-six, twenty-two, fifty-nine VZ, five ninety-one East Fordham Road, the Bronx.
Okay. Oh, okay. So the initial hearing was held on March twenty-eight. Um, the applicant has provided its response to the comments that were raised. Um, an operational plan has been providing uh provided regarding continuous use between two thousand seven and two thousand eleven. The operator of the auto repair affirms that the use um has been at the subject site since nineteen ninety-five and it has been operating uninterrupted. Um, I, and that was stated because Google Street View doesn't go beyond a certain period, so um, I, you know, and I think we typically ask for other utility bills, but in this case, it's way way too far out and I don't know if people keep bills from nineteen nineties and two thousand. Now, so I, you know, I I looked with the commissioners if you're okay with it. I am okay with it. Um, applicant agrees to repair and maintain the asphalt and parking in the rear will be striped for twelve cars and the opacity of the fence along the rear will be increased to hundred percent. Um, the applicant has revised the plan accordingly. Um, and it also includes now the picnic bench, uh which I think is not a bad amenity for the employers. Um, and so I have a couple of questions. Um, the applicant has provided photos of the site showing that the barbed wire uh has been removed. At the same time, the photo shows a vehicle with for sale sign parked right in front of the property line, which is very contrary, um, which is contradicting the statement that that has been made in the cover letter and the operational plan. Um, sales of vehicles is not permitted on the site and I'm concerned about the applicant's willingness to ad- adhere to the simple board condition. Um, so the improvement to the site regarding asphalting the surface, adding opacities to the fence, um, I would strongly suggest that the applicant do that prior to board um making any decision on this case. And the um operator and the owner of the site must submit an affidavit stating that there shall be no sales of vehicles taking place from this site. And um, and you know, we will have this on our one of many sites that our compliance officer will be visiting to ensure it is complying with a very basic, simple regulation. Um, Vice Chair Shabata.
Nothing further from me, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hartley Brown.
I'm satisfied with the project except for the barbed wire um framework is still on their fences and that should just be removed so that they can't easily replace it.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I agree that they would need to comply with the our previous conditions regarding the car sale and refrain from having that onsite. Uh, they submitted the FEMA flood map. I requested last hearing. Thank you. Uh, also regarding the asphalt, I I I was in favor of like having them specify a timeframe, not just delay the case and and we can send our compliance officer to take a look whether it's done or not. If if the board wanna like make it like done before we grant, I'm I'm fine with this uh as well. And they also corrected the zoning analysis for and the dimensions for the building along with the floor area issue. Thank you.
This would be a perfect time to do the asphalt, otherwise.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with you. Um, Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. The only thing I'd like to add is they note the blade sign um along the street frontage is going to be removed. I think that should be included in what they are able to achieve prior to decision. Um, it's unclear in their application whether they're going to replace it. There's a lot, there's a sort of reference to removing the sign, maybe replacing it with something else, so I think that should be established and finalized before we make a decision. Thank you.
Yes, I agree, and I think um it need, it needs to comply with the signage regulations, so two zero three five. I'm just looking at the plans. So was it in the most recent photographs that was submitted?
It's, it is in the most recent photographs and then it's indicated in the plans um as to be removed. I can see if I can pull it up.
Removed now. It's uh, there's no reason why it needs to be removed. It should be removed now.
Yes, I agree.
I agree with you. Okay, thank you.
Final case, new cases, item number twenty-seven, twenty-one, sixty BZ, one twelve, one sixteen, West Twenty-Eight Street, Manhattan.
Okay, this is a new case. Uh, we have received proof of service of initial filing and proof of hearing. Community board has voted to disapprove this application. Um, this is an application for a use variance pursuant to zoning resolution section 72 dash 21 on the subject site. So this is an existing in um, interior lot uh, with the which is part of a larger zoning lot. The zoning lot contains an existing hotel. It's a pre-existing um, hotel. And the proposed site uh, is an addition, additional site uh, which has a 20-foot frontage uh, on, along the street. So the applicant is proposing to enlarge the existing hotel uh, from the former lot, Lot 49 um, and um, to the existing, uh, the new zoning lot um, to provide um, additional rooms. So the, there will be an increasing the number of hotel rooms and the building height that is proposed would be an 18-story building um, with 107, total of 179 hotel rooms. So, and also the proposed enlargement will be accessed from the existing hotel. I, I'm just pulling up the drawings. Yeah. So with regards to, um, so the, and the applicant states in its as of right, um, and as of right to use on this site would be um, based on the underlying zoning would be a manufacturing or an office building and an office building was analyzed and it was, uh, the study indicates that um, it would um, not be a viable, it would not result in viable floor plates. Um, and I would say there are many um, similarly situated sites that the board in the past had studied in the area where um, um, the board had agreed, uh, had accepted this argument where an office use and such a narrow lot uh, would result in a not viable, non-viable office floor plate because of the amount of circulation spaces um, that would kind of take up most of the floor plate. So I'm going to just go through the findings uh, with regards to the uniqueness. Um, the applicant states is the narrow lot width condition that, and that is the hardship. Um, and to that, the applicant has provided a uniqueness study. Um, I'm satisfied with the analysis and a narrowness of this would result in floor plate that would not be viable for commercial use as I had stated just a few seconds ago. And that is persuasive. However, the uh, you know, the applicant also needs to look at this site um, in relation, since it's, it's not a standalone zoning lot. It's a zoning lot that consists an existing lot. So the applicant needs to build up its narrative as to how this site is better situated or not better situated or similarly situated if there are others such uh, commonly handled lots in this area. Um, I just want to also bring to board's attention that board had recently approved a use variance to allow residential use on site number 11, which is the applicant's uh, analysis of uniqueness. And this site is located two lots away from uh, from the subject uh, development site on the same block. With regards to the financial, I want to hear uh, from Commissioner Artley Brown um, as to uh, what, um, whether there are any concerns. I um, just don't know how to analyze a situation where you have an existing building and that has already been built and how do you factor in the cost associated with that uh, improvements to connect the new building and how do you analyze that? Um, so that's a question I have. With regards to the neighborhood context, um, the neighborhood is a mix of commercial and hotel use. So the request for a use um, change is not out of, for the proposed use is not going to be out of context. I do want a study of the setback along the front lot line and street wall height study and the building height study. Um, the uh, the revised, the proposed streetscape drawing and infill um, the BSA approved building on Lot 51 for context. Um, given the narrowness of the site, the proposed height should be lowered. Prior approval of a site on the subject um, block um, uh, that was shown in the uniqueness study was approved by the board in 2022. And one of the modifications to the building design was the street wall with a setback. And the initial proposal was a building without a setback at the street line for the residential building and the building height was also reduced. Um, so I do think um, in this case, we need to look at the um, street wall context study to see whether that, I mean, and to what extent that facilitates the works with or against the proposed uh, use. Because that proposed use was a residential use, so maybe a deeper floor plate may have been added, but in this case may not have been, but the applicant needs to clarify that and state why. Um, so with regards to the self-created, um, two former lots, Lot 48 and 49 were acquired in um, 2018 as stated in the document with the intention to enlarge the abating hotel. Uh, a title search was provided for the abating lots. Apart from the common ownership of Lot 48, Lot 49, um, the abating lots were separately owned. In the self-created, the applicant really needs to go through how uh, having these two lots together benefits or hurts the site and, and, and therefore why it should not be considered a self-created hardship. And then I think the fact that there is an existing hotel on one of the site and um, and this site was purchased after the, the hotel was constructed with the plan to expansion is something that needs to be fleshed out more clearly. And if this site were to be built as a standalone site, what it could achieve or could not and uh, and therefore having it combined with the existing hotel, how it benefits um, the subject site, um, the development side, I would call it. The narrowness of the site is a hardship that makes an as of right use um, um, at the subject site not feasible. Also, the current market condition where many Class A, B and office uh, spaces remain occupied, the viability of a narrow office plate is very questionable. So I think from a use point of view, I fully think um, an office use would not be viable. Um, the neighborhood context needs to be more, needs to be studied and needs to be responded to. And my question is, as I look at the site, uh, the floor plat, a floor plan, the proposed building, the proposed enlargement portion will only contain rooms with almost no vertical circulation um, to be located uh, on the proposed portion. Um, it would be utilizing all the circulation that is existing in the existing building. Um, so my question is, why then one needs to have such a high density, um, nearly a 10 F A R um, building there? Because you're just using the entirety of the floor for, for hotel rooms. And, and that's another question that I need. That's why my question I have regarding the financing, because I think there is room and the building height should be lowered um, because it is, as it is, it's taller than the existing building. And because it's narrow floor plate, it's making it look out of context and it needs to be brought down. Um, so those are my initial comments. Vice Cheshaveta.
Uh, thank you for your comments and I, I generally agree with your statements that this needs to be flushed out a great deal. Um, I, because there, there's they can't, they, they both need to recognize that they can't use it, this like a sword and a shield. It's the, it's, it's, this lot's too small. Uh, I understand that. But we have to also consider that there is an adjoining lot and that should definitely go into the E finding of the, 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 the minimal variance. Uh, the only thing I, I want to comment on that is in addition to what you've stated is I don't believe they've exhausted all their administrative remedies. Um, unlike uh, the usual vesting cases that we receive where we are the unique and exclusive jurisdiction for cases like this. Um, this has an administrative remedy um, in CPC ZR 74803 special permit. And I'd like to ask the applicant to address um, why that hasn't been explored.
Um, okay. Commissioner Artley Brown. Thank you.
So I want to start by speaking directly to the A and the D finding. And I want to clarify that we should be doing a zoning lot analysis and not a tax lot analysis for both the A finding and the D finding. So while the tax lot of uh, under study is 20 feet by, I think, 95 feet or 97 feet, the zoning lot is larger, it's 60 feet by the 97 feet. Therefore, this lot, because it is co-owned with its adjacent, needs to be for the uniqueness finding compared with other lots that are also experiencing co-ownership with adjacents. I'm not saying they can't make the A finding, but I think that um, comparing this to other narrow lots is doing an injustice to the other narrow lots because these people here are definitely in some kind of an advantageous situation regarding the simple narrow tax slash zoning lots. And so that needs to be addressed in the uniqueness finding and it also has to be addressed in the D finding because they need to talk about the fact that yes, they are co-owned with their adjacent. But whereas um, there are other cases within the study area where lots, narrow lots are co-owned with adjacents are clearly development sites where you just can get rid of the two-story buildings and build something on the entire zoning lot. This is a case where you have a fairly recently built building that is very viable, taking up a large part of the zoning lots, leaving very little space for another development. And that should be addressed before they really can move on. That's like the major hindrance at this point in their overall argument. Assuming they get past that and we take a look at the financials, I do have a number of financial questions that should be addressed. Um, this site is being valued in two factions. One part is the existing hotel and it's being valued based on other hotel sales. And then the other portion of the lot, the narrow portion, is based on unused development rights and it's compared to vacant and underutilized sites in the area. So when I look at the vacant, underutilized sites, um, all of the sites are M1D6. Three of them are before 2018 and they are in the $410 to $495 per developable square foot range before adjustments and only one of the sites is post 2018. And that one comes in at a much lower $306 per developable foot before adjustments, even though it's actually larger and it's squared off. So they do do minor adjustments for time, but the first thing that went through my mind was, has time actually had a bigger impact on the downward trend of the sales prices than they're indicating in their downward adjustment of, I believe, 5%? So one way they can resolve that issue would be to look at any post 2018 sales in that area and look at the sales price per developable square foot and show me that there isn't such a drastic downward trend going on there. And then also, now when we look at the other portion of the site value, which is based on the hotel sales, four of the comparables are 17 to 21-story hotels. Three of them are similar in size. One of them is four times the size. One of them is 20, from 2018 and three of them are from 2019. All four of them are pre-COVID sales. Now, we know for a fact that COVID-19 actually devastated the hotel industry. So then I'm not sure in this case, a mere 5% time adjustment accounts for the devastation to the hotel industry. So my question is, can you find some post 2020 sales, post beginning of 2020 sales that would show us exactly the impact that COVID had on hotel values and sales prices for hotels in order to ground that assumption in uh, more relevant recent facts? So those are my questions having to do with the site value because the whole idea behind it is I want to know if their overall site value of 40.2 million is an accurate valuation of the site or whether or not um, that site value should be lowered so that it's not driving the hardship and then driving the minimal variance? Um, go ahead.
Vice Cheshaveta, I was wondering if you could uh, give some guidance to the applicant with regard to how that you want a uniqueness study made? Because I don't.
Go back for the A finding?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So they, all right. So don't finish.
No, no, yeah, I, I, I thought you were done together. I thought you were done.
I do want to finish the financial and then go back to it.
Yeah, please.
Okay. So um, my next financial comments have to do with the construction costs. So the applicant makes a statement that they used a cost estimator because this is an old report. But what they did is they then did an after uh, report analysis of Marshall and Swift costs and compared it to their cost estimator to show that they were pretty much in the ballpark of what Marshall and Swift would do. However, it's interesting, they do this only for the as of right and they don't do it for the proposed hotel. So there's no grounding of the proposed hotel costs in any Marshall and Swift costs. I also want to say that since we are asking for updated information in terms of site value, I think it wouldn't be a stretch to ask them to switch to their Marshall and Swift costs for both the as of right and the proposed, since they're going to have to revise the report anyway. I feel like the, the as of right office, Marshall and Swift costs are similar to the as of right cost estimator costs and they do use average Class B office building costs, which are fine to use. The areas where we'll probably see some sort of reduction are in the soft costs and the FFNE because that's what's showing the difference between the cost estimator and the Marshall and Swift cost. Because we know that the Marshall and Swift costs include some of those soft costs that they're itemizing and adding into the cost factor after the fact. And then of course, once we look at the hotel costs, what I want them to pay attention to is the fact that this really is an enlargement slash alteration type one. It is not new construction from the ground up. And new construction from the ground up is brand-new foundations, four new structural walls. And then, you know, waterproofing and heating and plumbing and everything that goes into a brand-new standalone building. They're not going to have some of those costs because they're putting three walls up and they're breaking through the fourth wall of the hotel to enlarge it. And I'm thinking to myself, that's got to result in some kind of a reduction in the overall construction cost per square foot, even though they're arguing that it should be an increase. So I think they need to take a special look at that.
Why would it be an increase if you keep?
Well, what they're basically saying is they're breaking through the walls on every floor. And so therefore that's increasing the uh, construction cost to construct this enlargement. And I don't believe that's how it should be looked at.
Vice Chair just mentioned shoring. Would that be a factor, cause?
I'm, I'm not sure for that. I'm gonna, okay.
I, I.
I'm going to kick that one over to Commissioner Sheta. But those are my um, construction costs uh, questions. And so therefore, I think if they address those ca, uh, all of those questions I had, the financial report will be based on some firm, accurate assumptions. So now going back to your uniqueness study question to give um, focus on to what they should be studying. So I think they should be focusing in on the surrounding lots that are similar to them in that they are co-owned with at least one or two adjacents. Because they basically dismiss those lots when they talk about their um, uniqueness finding and they settle in on, I believe there are three other narrow lots and they allude to the fact that the last one that hasn't had development is coming before the board. No doubt, it's probably wrapped by the same applicant, which is why they know that. But those are the wrong um, comparables because those guys really. But those are the wrong comparables, because those guys really are individual lots, like the other case that we had in this area that was also rep by this group.
It's right abouting the hotel to the other side.
They're individual narrow lots without any possibility of being owned with an adjacent, no possibility of transferring development rights, which is something they should address here too, because why not just transfer your development rights to the hotel right next door? You're in a zoning lot with them. So you've already made the agreement that they'll be developed in tandem in one way, shape, or form. Why is that not an avenue possibility for you? So they should address that as well. So does that answer that question?
Thank you. And forgive me earlier, I didn't know you were not completed with your finances.
Oh, that's okay.
I think the argument that the applicant proposed of the as-of-right narrow lot thing, I think, when I was reviewing it, yes, it is a component, but the main, it really supports more of their finding D than more to the uniqueness of it. And because, yes, as a standalone site, it is encumbered, but it benefits being adjacent to it. But more of the, I thought the analysis that they provided was more helpful in my ability to understand why finding D, you know, the fact that these two lots are common, under common ownership, why is that still not, it's a self-created hardship? Why is that not an issue here? And I think that analysis was helpful. But I agree with you there. I didn't think of it, the air right, why wasn't that factored in? Which I think, again, it's like adding few more floors to that, that's a lot, that's a really tall building, and you would require, I think, either you'd have to go to city planning for a special permit for that, for enlargement, or you would have to come to the BSA for that.
True, but all this needs to be addressed in the statement of facts and findings. As I said to begin with, I'm, I'm pretty sure they can make the finding, but we can't allow this to proceed until it's actually addressed and explained.
Right, agree. No, I think this is more of a discussion that I'm trying to have to get it around in my head as to how this should be argued.
Just one more question. But with regard to the, the condition of the, the small lot, and how there's, it was in the process of being demolished, that would be something that we consider a self-created at that point, but how would you want them to address that?
I don't think necessarily it's a small, it's a self-created hardship in that that building supposedly was in horrible condition and is a tear-down anyway. So it's not like they tore down a viable building, and now they're screaming like, oh my God, we have a vacant lot, and that's our unique.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Otley Brown. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you. I, I want to start with some housekeeping comments. And first, they need to submit a FEMA map. I haven't seen one. If you look at the legend in the uniqueness study, the first figure, they need to fix the legend, because it confuses the subject site with the comparables. On the statement of facts, they say that on page 2, second paragraph, they indicate that they got an approval, they say-
Can I say, sorry, fix the legend in which-
In the uniqueness study, the first figure. It's the, they use the same, like, notation for the subject building and the comparables. They need to differentiate between both of them. And on the statement of facts, the second paragraph, it says that DOB approved the enlargement of the hotel in November 2018. And I'm not sure what kind of approval was, was, like, provided by DOB. And if they, if that was a permit, I'm not sure why they didn't invest. My understanding, like, if they got the permit before the effective date, they should have some time to start and proceed, even after the effective date. So we need clarification on that. On the construction cost, I would ask them, even if we're not, like, in need for, like, substantial, take a look at the financials. I would ask them to provide us with financials, construction cost, based on Marshall and Swift. The reason I'm saying that is because we've noticed during the past year or two that, like, itemized costs by cost estimators tend to be, like, inflated. Just three examples for that, if you look at the construction cost submitted, they include a demo item for almost half a million dollar. The watering cost for $1,000, for $100,000. If you look at the GUTIC report, page 6 of 9, item 4.3, you're gonna see clearly that, I read from the, from the report. Wait a second, I'm trying to open it. And it says, in light of the absence of groundwater. So that means that, that GUTIC report clearly indicates that there is no groundwater at present on-site, and I'm not sure why they are including 100 grand for the groundwater. Yes, it's not gonna, like, probably impact the feasibility of the project, but this is why, when people start just throwing cost into the financials, that's why we're asking them to revert back to Marshall and Swift. Same thing for underpinning. The report says that underpinning is not covered in the, in the report. It's, it's not included in the scope, and you can clearly see in the financials that there is a significant budget, 100,000, for the underpinning. Like, like, shortest story is, please, for the proposed and for the as-of-right, provide us with Marshall and Swift. I can see that the hard, the soft cost for the, for the proposed and for the as-of-right is about 30% for the base construction cost, which I believe is too high, especially for the as-of-right, knowing that part of the soft cost is already factored in, in Marshall and Swift. So hopefully, when they resubmit based on Marshall and Swift, the soft cost is, the additional soft cost to the one included in Marshall and Swift is not going to be 30%. It should be much less than that. The cost per, per square foot, for the, the current cost per square foot for the proposed, based on the itemized cost, is $520 per square feet, per square foot, which is, which is again too high. So they need to take a look at these and fix them. Finally, I have an alert for them. If you look at the GUTIC report and you look at the boring location plan in the GUTIC report, I don't believe the alignment, the locations for the borings executed on-site meet the building code requirements. They need to take a look at that. Probably the number of borings meets, but the locations of the borings, if the code indicates that if you have a site like this and you need two borings, you cannot put them next to each other. You need to distribute them within the site, so the results you get from the boring are represented to the entire site footprint. The way that borings are aligned, I'm not sure if that was because of limitation on the, on the, like, the previously existed, exist building, probably. That was the reason, but they need to probably dig or drill one or two more borings within other areas that were not explored before. This is not a requirement from us. It's just an alert for them. Thank you.
So, the, I'm just looking at the proposed floor plan. In the proposed floor plan, the footprint is, do they have a full, yes, they have a full lot, lot line basement. That's the only one that goes lot line. After that, so you're saying, based on the basement, the boring should be even more spread out?
If you look at the building footprint, the largest floor is the basement.
Basement, right.
Yes, and if you look at the three borings, they are like-
Just contained.
Even, even if you look at the, like, the period floor, the upper floors, the three borings are, like, next to each other.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. It should be based on the basement.
And honestly, the reason I'm alerting them to take a look at that, I don't want the owner to be victimized by being charged by change orders, because they have rock on-site, and I believe they are counting on that and designing the foundation. And if you do three borings next to each other, you're gonna get a picture that's representative of that spot. And if you, like, budget for that condition, and the conditions beyond these borings are different, you might be surprised by, by, like, additional cost. So take a look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't talk about the, the shoring thing. I don't think, if you look at the, the proposed building, they can engineer this to make sure that they have an opening, whatever they want, and engineering to do it without shoring, even they can leave it during construction. For the existing building, if you have a wall bearing, or a bearing wall building, usually you need to do some, to provide some shoring, but this is not a wall, a bearing wall structure, the existing hotel, it's iris. So I, I'm like, sure that this is a skeleton building, and when you have a skeleton, the walls are not the elements that carry the load. So there is no point of, I haven't seen him talking about shoring, actually. But if they did, I would ask them to explain it to us, why they need shoring. I don't think shoring is needed to connect the proposed and the existing buildings at all. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and so was shoring cost included in the financial analysis?
I didn't see that.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful. Commissioner Yun?
Thank you. Just to jump onto that last topic, the, so I'm asking this to my board members. If we go, if we direct them to go with Marshall and Swift, then the project would be priced at, construction cost would be priced at a kind of standardized, consistent metric between the as-of-right and the proposed, and as a new building construction. I guess this is for Commissioner Otley Brown, because she mentioned whether this should be, you know, counted as a new building, or if it's alteration type 1. From a construction cost perspective, if they use Marshall and Swift, it would be as a new building to standardize it between the as-of-right and the proposed, correct? Okay, all right, just so I understand. I just wanted to note that, you know, the existing building, the hotel, has a stair core here where they propose to punch through and demolish the stair core and move it to, into the part of the proposed development site. I will say, that is probably more complicated than, than just punching a hole. So just to, just to give some, maybe credit to the statement that it might be more expensive even than just building a separate standalone building, because the, usually, and again, Commissioner Sheta may have a different opinion, but the stair cores are often loaded with a lot of structure, a lot of shear, and so, and also you have no floors there, so you have to then infill the floors and move the structure. There probably will be some shoring required. In any case, I don't know the details of the structure, I'm not an expert in that, but it does seem like where they are punching through is precisely a point where it would be more difficult to punch through than in any other case. So the only other thing I want to add, it's been a very detailed review so far, is that CB5 gave us a very long report, and they believe that the site was owned by this developer since 2012. The ACRA shows a deed transfer between, I think it's 112 West 28th Street LLC to Midtown West Hotel in 2018. Why is it that the community board believed that this was in ownership by the same developers since 2012, and why is that in their report? Because they, they claim that this developer had six years in which to develop this as-of-right prior to the hotel tax amendment. That's the only question I have. Thanks, nothing further.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Sheta?
Yeah, just to comment on the, the stair that they're gonna be in need to relocate. I did pay attention to that, and I, 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 looking at the existing plans, if you look at, for example, E-005.00, I can see, as a construction engineer, I can see that the, like, according to the thicknesses of the wall elements that are indicated on the plans, that the, the main elements that are taking care of the lateral loads are the U-shaped sheer walls around the elevators, the two elevators. And I believe also it might be one of the, like, the walls along the perimeter with the storage on top of the, the pages located. I don't think the, the walls around the staircase that's gonna be relocated are contributing much to the sheer loading or the lateral road resisting system. The reason I'm saying that, if you look at the inner wall for that staircase, it's kind of like, it's kind of like skewed. It's going horizontal, and then it's going down, and then again horizontal. So I don't think it's contributing that much to resisting the sheer loads. Probably, it's contributing to taking, maybe if it has a beam on top of it, maybe it's transmitting some of the gravity loads, which, which I would say with the removal of the staircase would be insignificant, considering the distance between this wall and the sheer wall for the elevator pool. In addition to that, they already included some budget in the construction cost for the demolition. So if, if they believe that the demolition is gonna cause X, and it's not gonna be included in Marshall and Swift, I would be open to, like, having, have an add-on item to the Marshall and Swift. And of course, it's, it's value, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think of something close to the 400,000 that they currently include. Probably, it's something on the order of probably 50 grand or so. I would be open to that. Thank you.
I'm just looking at the existing plan of the hotel and where the stair is located and where it's being proposed. It seems the stair is going to be moved-
Yeah, I did-
And replaced with, replaced with, like, a trash chute enclosure or something that, that'll take care of the vertical circulation there and moving it. But I think all of you are raising good questions, because this does go into the financial as to by keeping the stair there, are you reducing the cost and yet achieve your ability to enlarge and minimize the cost-related component? And therefore, the proposed ask, shouldn't, shouldn't that be scaled accordingly? That's kind of how I see the location of the stair and the placement and the cost associated with it. If, if there's a way to kind of keeping the stair where it is and moving, circulating around it, I, you know, that's-
I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't go that route. I don't want to push them to, like, adapt a certain architectural design in their building. It's up to them to design it the way they want to design it. Especially, if this is a significant cost item, I would be pushing for that. But if it's not, and I don't think it is, 50 grand for the entire building to make some openings at different floors, I don't think it's gonna be, like, causing any difference in the financial.
Yeah, if they agree to Marshall and Swift, that would, that would really shut up a great deal.
Plus some add-on for, for the, for the openings.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is Commissioner Yun. I only brought it up to, to shed some light as far as the potential increase in construction costs that they're claiming as opposed to just building a new, new construction building. There are some complications architecturally, maybe not as much structurally, but with replacing and removing, or moving the stair. And I also agree with Commissioner Sheta that making them do a design study to keep the stair in place right in the middle of the circulation between the two very narrow floor plates, it doesn't seem like it would be so fruitful, because it's clear that the circular, it would increase the amount of circulation and reduce room sizes quite significantly. I think that what they've done is very efficient. I merely brought it up to say that sometimes amending an existing structure can be much more expensive than just building something clean. And that was the only reason I brought it up, just because Commissioner Otley Brown expressed some skepticism about that. And in my limited experience, I thought that that would be helpful, that it's not necessarily always that simple, and moving a stair is often quite complicated. But I think that going with Marshall and Swift and standardizing the comparison for our sake collectively will make this much easier.
Okay. Okay, so as our general counsel pointed out in our notice of comment, we did ask the applicant. To consider using the Marshall and Swift.
And 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 just they did.
Commissioner.
But like Commissioner Brown indicated, this is Commissioner Sheta, I'm sorry. They did, but they did for the as of right. I understand they did this for a reason. I don't want to comment on it, but please do it for both. And 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 you know what? The fifty grand that I'm talking about for the opening from the existing building to to access from the existing building to the. To the proposed and to relocate that staircase. I do believe that that uncertainty in Marshall and Swift and the items that are automatically included in Marshall and Swift. For example, Marshall and Swift includes something for the reward. Definitely. And I spoke to them. They include something for the underpenny. They include something for that kind of soil material that's underneath this side. All these kind of add-ons in Marshall, you don't have them for everything inside.
Just once again, I have to take.
And and just to be clear, it it was asked for both construction cost estimates to use Marshall and Swift.
Yes, for the proposed and that's yes, yeah. And I I would agree that this is a new construction. I wouldn't. I wouldn't treat it as as like a an alteration.
Well, it's the last case.
I don't know if the chair wants to say anything further on it. I don't believe he does, but.
Should we take like a five minute break?
Yeah, so.
While the applicant. Overages their team.
Yeah, we're gonna do that, but um. She wants to do it now.
She usually.
She usually does a break at the end of the review. We don't know. We don't know if she's done with the review on this. So we could take the five minute break and then say the review is completed.
Why don't you wait till she responds? No, she's right. My apologies.
Then it's okay. So do you have anything? We have anything else to add?
No, I thank you.
Thank you.
This was very educational for me. Thank you very much. So.
So if no, no other questions, then this concludes the public review session for May twenty third.
Okay. Your mic is not on.
Oh, no, it is on.
I'm not sure if Commissioner Yun is.
Oh, Commissioner Yun, did you have additional comments? I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm I was done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So so let's take a quick five minute break before we go into public hearing. For to let the applicants and the public participants to regroup. And and then we shall resume with our public hearing. Thank you. Five minutes. It's eleven thirty five. Move the break screen, please.
Okay, everyone, we are back live.
Good morning. Good afternoon. Was it still morning, right? Good morning. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for May twenty third, twenty twenty three. We'll begin with the zoning calendar, continued hearing items, item number twenty two, twenty twenty one seventeen B Z eighty seven nineteen Rockaway Boulevard, Queens.
I think this is Mr. Kanzada and Mr. Gupta.
Who has the handle though?
Naseer Kanzada and.
Oh, here we go. Yes, okay. Mm hmm. Yeah, yeah. I can't see on the screen here. I'm telling you on the screen. Yeah.
Give us one second.
And let me move on. Sorry, just give us one moment. Yeah, yeah, that's six three six. Okay, there it goes. I'm sorry. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Kanzada. Okay, raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Please state your name and proceed.
Yes. Yes, my name is Naseer Kanzada. I'm the applicant.
Diwakar Gupta.
Go ahead.
So we listened to the review session this morning. We will install. So we'll change our plans and we'll have an air pump as well as a vacuum. So we'll have one air pump and one vacuum. Rather than two vacuums, the air pump is gonna be on the left side of the building while the vacuum will be along eighty eighth street.
No, just one second. I'm I'm just looking at the plan. Where would the vacuum be? Along eighty eighth street?
Yes. And then we'll rotate the drain so that way, rather than being perpendicular to the sidewalk, it'll be parallel to the sidewalk. And after installing the drain, if we find that it's insufficient to capture all the runoff, then we'll address the problem. We'll make it larger or, you know, do whatever needs to be done to make sure it's capturing all the water from the storms and from the car wash.
Is that?
Yes, it is. It is. Thank you.
Yeah, there is a drain already there by the dispenser, but there's no trench drain, so we are proposing a trench drain along the curb. So it will be parallel with the sidewalk.
And then the chain link fence that we're proposing, so it's gonna extend to the corner of the neighboring building. So it's gonna go to the northwest corner of the site, but it's not gonna be a a along the northern lot line, but it's not gonna be along the western lot line. Because the neighboring building goes right up to the lot line, so.
The neighboring building along Rockaway.
Along Rockaway Boulevard, yeah.
Yeah, behind the.
When I'm looking at, when I looked at the photos, it seems there is a gap and even your sight plan, it shows there is a gap between the existing building and your lot line. So and the fence, it's not very clear from the diagram. Repeat zoom in.
Actually, by putting the fence, people accumulate garbage there. So we don't put the fence there. We remove the fence so we can clean up. If there's a fence there, then behind garbage accumulate. So we are removing, there was a busted fence. We are removing the fence. Actually, it's removed already and we cleaned up the back of the building. So if there's no fence, then it's less garbage. If fences there, people put garbage behind the fence.
So my question is, will the fence be behind the self car wash machine?
No, no fence behind the car wash.
Okay, that's a concern because let's say if there's any water runoff from the self car wash machine, wash machine. It needs to be contained within the site and be caught in the in that drain. And it shouldn't then go into the neighboring property and cause an an issue. And that's one of the reasons why I was asking why isn't if the fence is extending beyond the car wash and up to the trash enclosure. It seems the trash enclosure is right built to the property line. But but why not extend the. The chain link fence. In this case, it it should be if you're proposing the car wash, it cannot just be standing. Without any protection against the abutting building. Doesn't matter whether the building stays or not. You need to ensure whatever operation is happening on your side is not going to be a nuisance to the abutting site.
Yeah, I understand that by putting fence, people will throw the garbage. It's gonna be four feet high fence or five feet. People put the garbage behind it. Eight feet. So people put the garbage behind it. I can I can propose no problem. I can put eight feet fence. But my fear is people will keep a garbage behind it. If there's no fence, we can clean up easy.
But the garbage that will be behind that fence, unfortunately, will be on the abutting property and. But any runoff from the car wash from your property to the abutting property is it's a it's what we are questioning. Commissioner Sheta.
You think you should. Yeah, that the the runoff, my understanding is the I'm looking at the grades outlooks now. And if if you look at the grades, the the grades actually pitch towards the street. And if they build a little curve and if the arms of the car wash are extruding into the side. Like even twelve inches beyond that curve. I wouldn't think of any like flow from the car wash. That's gonna be like heading to that adjacent property. It's gonna be moving with the slope towards either the drain or to the sidewalk. And that's why I asked them to rotate the drain. Do you want me to shift the screen and explain?
No, no, no. I I okay, so so it won't be the water that will run off to the abutting neighborhood building that.
It shouldn't. It shouldn't if the grades are similar to what I'm looking at right now. And if they build a curb.
I, okay, so that's fine. I still think a chain link fence should be provided along the property line. Reason being that it will contain any debris that is contained within your from. Running into the abutting property. Whatever debris is contained within your property, you're responsible for cleaning it. Any debris on the next door property that comes into your property becomes your responsibility. So it's in your best interest to provide a fence between your property and the next door property. So you are responsible for cleaning what's contained, what's happening within your site. And if not for the car wash, at least for the containing of the.
What I'm what I'm saying is the chain lynch is not the chain link fence is not related to the flow of the water because it's it's not even watertight. But yes, I I totally agree that it's needed. To like separate the the whatever trash or or. Somebody throws something, it's not gonna be on the adjacent property. It's gonna stay on the station property.
Yeah, okay. So at least. Yeah, okay. So at least I do notice from the photos that you have provided that the fence along that area is, has buckled, is almost non-existent. And, but you, if you, if you don't provide it, you're going to create more of a nuisance between your property and the abutting property by at least providing the fence, you're containing it. And you're maintaining your site. What happens to the other side? Unfortunately, you have no control on it, but you also don't want to be held responsible for that.
So we will propose eight feet fence with a six inch curb. So no more runoff and eight feet fence. So nobody can throw garbage over the fence. If it's six feet or four feet, somebody can throw garbage behind it. But if it's eight feet, it will be, you know, we will save a little bit of garbage.
Okay. All right. So eight foot high fence along the western lot line is what you're agreeing to provide.
That's right. With the curb, we will maintain the curb also six inch, so no runoff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kanzada. This is Commissioner Sheta. And if you, they are going to be constructing based on your drawings. I'm not sure if your drawings are just for filing, or they're going to use them for construction. But if they are, please give him a detail. You don't have to put that on our, on our filing set. But give him a detail that shows that arms extrude at least a foot or 18 inches inside the station. So when they wash the car, you make sure that it's, no water is going to be like splashing on the building or like crossing to the adjacent property.
That's the reason. That is the reason eight feet fence will, you know, block the splash of the water from the cars.
Chain links do not block waters.
No, we will have the apex slot in it. So it will maximum it can.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay. And then for the 88 parking spot, we can make the parking spot that's located in front of the auto repair shop ADA accessible. And we will make the planting beds four feet deep rather than, one rather than one foot deep.
Okay. All right. That's a pretty big task because you have concrete right now. So I just want to make sure you are going to do it and not something that.
So, so we want, you want four feet wide planting bed, not the deep, deep.
No, 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 depth, depth is the one. Depth is right now 10 inch. 10 inches inadequate for a bulb of a tree that is going to be eight foot high. It needs to be at least, when, what I was looking at the website, it said for a six foot high arborvitae, it has to be 22 to, I think, 40 inches. So for an eight foot, you would need definitely more than that. So please look into that and propose the adequate depth of the soil for an eight foot high arborvitae. That's all I'm suggesting. I'm not the expert, landscape expert, but you should look into it and make sure you propose the adequate amount of depth.
Okay, no problem. Whatever required.
And you're proposing that along the rear yard line and also along the 88. Now, I think if you want to, I would be okay. If you're proposing something that is not that high, eight foot high arborvitae along 88th, I think it's 88th Street, right? 88th Street. Maybe that can be shorter, shorter, lower shrubs. And then you may not need such a depth of in soil bed along 88. But, so do look into that. I'm okay with 88th Street not having an eight foot high arborvitae. But it could be lower shrubs, whereas along the residential lot line, you, eight foot high makes sense. But with that, you need to have proportional depth of soil bed.
Arborta evergreens have a disease or something. Most places, most of my gas stations, half of them are dead now. So I don't know why, but anyway, we still propose it's not that.
I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Kanzada.
That, that arborita evergreen plants have a disease going on. So wherever we have on the gas station, half of them are dying. So.
And why are they dying?
I think there's a disease going on because on my properties, I have like 25 years ago planted and half of them died now. So something is there, either the global warming, weather, something happens to these plants. I don't know, you notice or not, I notice all the, every day that wherever these plants are there, half of them dying. So it looks like this is dying especially. So we will still plant, you know, on my gas station, we are doing it.
All I would suggest is propose something that is durable, easy to maintain and, and is not going to break the bank.
Understand. No problem. We do that. We do the best.
But that also serves the purpose of providing adequate buffer between this, the, this gas station and the abutting residential. So.
You'll have six feet fence and then we put evergreens outside. Okay.
Commissioner Sheta.
I, I have a different take on the landscape strap. Do you know what kind of foundation for the adjacent building that's existing?
It's a garage, four feet below grade.
So it's a spread foundation, four feet below grade?
That is correct.
And the root depth is going to be about three feet or so. I would advise that you, when you, when you put the planting bed, put some sort of isolation underneath it and wrap it up adjacent to the building, stick it to the wall. And make sure that, that the water is not going to be seeping to the foundation living because it might cause some softening. You don't know what kind of soil material there. It might cause some softening and might cause that building to start dancing. You don't, you don't want to see something like that.
Yeah, but the next door building does not have a cellar and we are not proposing too many plant against the building. Only one plant is going against the building. All over, all other plants are against the property line. No building.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned about lateral pressure. I'm concerned about softening of the existing soil.
Okay.
That ground water in this area is not shallow. If it is, soil would be wet either way. But because of the absence of the ground water, it's definitely, it's deeper than four feet. And if you put a planting bed and with the cycles of wetting and drying, it might cause some soap. I've seen this in, in, in a building in Staten Island and you don't want to encounter something like that. Be careful. Just, just make sure to provide some, some like shielding for the building from the effect of the drying and wetting.
No problem. We'll put some kind of two inch foam or styrofoam so we don't have the depth.
Mr. Kanzada, how many plants are going to be planted along this rear portion?
We have.
I think. You, you have more than one or two, right? I think few of them are going to be against.
There are 13 plants against the residential wall. 13 plants against the residential wall, but this building is not attached. And on the car wash side, we have one plant touching the, that's what Commissioner is saying.
I think what I would suggest is when you do propose something, just look into the viability of it, cost associated with it and, and its practicality of it to make sure something that works. And if it turns out that you're not at all able to do justice by providing an in-ground planting at all and it's going to cost to, with all of this measure issues with your abutting neighbors, then put together a proposal for a really good above-ground planting. And if, and to do that, you need to again maintain enough of the soil depth.
Above ground.
Above ground for that. And, and then put that planting there. So I, I'm not going to force you to do something that would end, end up being a burden and, and not practical. And, and therefore it won't get done, right? So if it can, if you can do in-ground planting without any issues, absolutely. We are all for it. Go for it. But if that does not work, look at a better solution, alternate solution, which can be an above-ground planting, especially along the rear lot line, along 88th Street in-ground. I think if you do low shrubs, you don't need to go that deep and that can work. But on the rear section, I'm a little concerned. So just think of it properly and, and come up with a solution that is practical, doable, efficient and, and would serve the intent that this board is looking for.
Well taken and we take care of it. No problem.
Thank you, Chair. That's a good point.
So for the timeline for construction, we're estimating roughly six months to do all the work and basically get the certificate of occupancy from the Department of Buildings.
Okay.
For the hours of operation, what we're proposing is 24 hours a day, seven days a week for the gasoline sales. The convenience store will be open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM every day of the week. And the auto repair shop will be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM every day of the week. The car wash, the vacuum and the air pump, they will be managed by the convenience store employee and they'll be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week.
So the auto repair is also open seven days?
Yes.
And, and so the, all the, and the car wash, all of these are maintained by the auto repair operator or the convenience store operator?
Gas station.
I couldn't hear you. Sorry, Mr. Kanzada.
It's the gas station guys, they, they maintain the car wash.
Okay.
The Lumen spread diagram, it does take into account the proposed lights for the canopy. Right now there's existing dispensers, lights, existing lights above the dispensers, but those would be replaced by the lights in the canopy.
Okay. Yes, I didn't notice that. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay. Questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Yun, any, any additional?
Okay. Did they address the garbage enclosure?
Oh, no. Yes, that's a very good point. Commissioner Otley Brown had a question regarding the material that is being proposed for the garbage enclosure. Why is a metal pen being picked and not a concrete block? Which will be as durable and withstand any damage or with regards to all the usage of water and suds from the car wash.
Okay, we always propose that chailing fence with the blocking in it. So it's repairable. And when this dumpster hits the block wall, the crack fall apart and then we're to replace the whole structure. And if you do block wall, then we need a four feet deep foundation and all those things. So we tried to avoid that. And we tried to put changing fence with blocking so container can go inside. And if it hits the fence, we can always repair the fence or if it bends or something, that can be done. But with the block wall, it's more work and always cracks and breaking fall apart. So these things, that's the reason we, we propose green chailing fence.
Chain link fence. I, I did not think that's what was being proposed.
Yeah, right now we have metal enclosure, but we will change it to chailing fence. So this.
No, 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 no. I think what you're proposing right now is eight foot powder coated metal enclosure with corrugated waterproof weather assistance sheeting all around colored green. And you're proposing to change it to chain link fence.
Because we would have a question on this one. So we can change it to chailing fence. If not, then.
Can you send a sample? Can you provide sample of what you're proposing, the metal and?
Okay, we will, we'll give you sample from the other, other job we did for you.
Commissioner Shabeta, Vice Chair Shabeta had a question as to why the concrete doesn't work. And I think what you're saying is that it would require you to put and you have to dig four feet for the foundation for the masonry wall.
Yeah.
We're going to have, well, then that begs the question, are we now changing our standards? Because this argument could be made everywhere. And we really don't want to slip in our quality of.
He's right. I, I agree with that statement. A chain link fence is, the, the question is, is the effect it has on the residents. And, and a chain link fence is see-through, the corrugated metal has its own issues that Commissioner Otley Brown stated. We're going, if, if, while I believe the construct, we've been pretty steady with a concrete structure with an enclosure. If that's pretty much what we've been doing for many of the cases that come before us. If there is something that you can propose that is equally as aesthetically pleasing and as durable, I would be interested in, in, in learning of that. I think it would, if, if I were the client, I would probably absorb the cost of just putting the structure in that's, that we requested rather than having a back and forth between the board, which again will increase costs.
Jump in, sorry, and just say, there are some aluminum powder coated corrugated metals that don't, that, that are quite durable, that are used for facades, used for roofs, that are used for many, many outdoor applications. So I think corrugated metal has some, it's a wide range. And so we need to see something that will satisfy. If, if you want to go down this route, I think Vice Chair is saying it'd be easier if you just show us what we've already done many, many times successfully. But if you'd like to go down the route of an alternative material, then provide some product data and some examples so we can hold it to a standard of a certain aesthetic. Also, I do believe we've also accepted PVC fencing. That's kind of residential character.
Can I just break in? Just want to correct the record here. We've been moving towards concrete block brick enclosures because not only are they nicer to look at, they also withstand any kind of impact in a way that metal and PVC fencing and aluminum chain link fencing does not. So we've seen in lots of cases of gas stations where these fences that are not concrete block get bent. They get knocked into by cars. They're twisted. The doors warp. The doors are hanging off of the frames improperly. They never close. And so all of that becomes unsightly. We've seen corrugated metal fencing. And what happens is the fencing starts to curl up from the ground. It starts to rust over time. It also doesn't withstand impacts. And all of that has the effect of making the gas station look like an eyesore.
And, and just to.
That's the problem.
And just to Commissioner Otley Brown's point, yes, I do agree that there are very durable corrugated metal. That being said, and when it's on a roof that doesn't regularly need to be opened, closed and, and have a truck come in towards it to take another metal enclosure out of it, it's not getting as much of the impact of, of, it's not receiving that much use or at least aggressive type of use as this particular, as, as this enclosure would receive on a regular basis. So that's why we've been closer to the concrete. That's why we've been generally sticking to the concrete basis. You know, again, it's up to the applicant to, if they want, which road they want to go down. If they want to go down a road where you've heard a majority of the board members make a position as to what they think is appropriate, that might be in, in the best interest.
Executive Director Constanter has his hand up. Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I just, I don't know if this would be helpful, but I, I just want to direct the board to section 3794 of the zoning resolution. I'm happy to share the screen. Hold on. Please let me know if you can see it.
Yes, yes.
So this is the, the general requirements of refuge storage screening in commercial districts. I, I don't know if this is at least a basis of, of for, for the sake of consistency, this is what, what would be required if, if they were just building a, a commercial use.
This is great. Thank you, Carlo.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
That was very helpful. Yes, a masonry wall, clearly a six foot high masonry wall. So, and, and as I think has been pointed out, I understand the difficulty, but I'm also giving you a relief by not having you to dig four foot all the way along all end of the property line. I'm, I'm options that would minimize the cost. So I think there is a fair amount of a balance that the board is exercising where it is required, you must. And where there is a room, we are willing to give you an option. And I don't think here there is an option. Here is a masonry wall. That needs to be provided.
Okay, we agree. We will put the masonry wall. Agree with the ZR 3794. Carlo is right. So we take.
Yes, and that should be a general guide since you bring many of these applications, just as how to initially address, of course, the board may at its discretion add other requirements, but this is, this should be the starting point.
Thank you, Executive Director. Sometimes, you know, we forget some of the basic guidelines and the regulations that's there. And it's, it was a good reminder of what the zoning requires. Thank you. Any other questions or comments or clarification, Mr. Kanzada, Mr. Gupta, that you need from our board?
Right. So the, we talked about the banners hanging along. Um, right, so the, we talked about the banners hanging along the fence at eighty eighth street. So those banners have been removed and I think we submitted photos last week showing that they've been taken out.
Yeah, I think they were just snipped off. They were kind of done in a very. It seemed like somebody just took scissors and just cut through and there's a little bits and pieces that are dangling. But I think given the fact that you're going through a six months improvement of the site, I would strongly suggest that you bring this entire site into shape. Because there are a lot of extraneous material that, that is hanging around in this site, including some leftover furniture. Uh, auto parts and all of those, so those all need to be kept contained in the building. This is not a, this is not a garbage storage facility. This is a convenience store with auto repair with gasoline service. So all those auto parts that were observed in the photos that were submitted recently. Needs to be contained within the building, so you need to provide an operational plan. That indicates how those are going to be contained and, and an affidavit from the operator of the auto repair. That all such parts shall be contained and no servicing of any vehicles shall be happening on, in, outside the building.
And you will have to clean out done during the construction. They will do major changes anyway, but they, they will install plants and everything, they will clean up. And we will provide you all that for dividends.
Yep.
That's it on our side.
Okay, let's go to the public then. The case we're currently discussing is twenty twenty one seventeen BZ eighty seven nineteen Rockaway Boulevard, Queens. Should you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or our toll free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight four zero six six three six three seven three three two and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, you will press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute if you are calling in on the phone and if you're in the Zoom room already. And wish to discuss this matter on Rockaway Boulevard, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand on the bottom of your screen. Once you permit it in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss. How much time would you need to make these corrections?
Right, okay, so around four weeks.
Four weeks, a four weeks. I unfortunately will not close this because I do want to look at the revised drawings and the proposals. Um, or I feel comfortable that we have all the information, especially trash enclosure, the planting. Um, and the affidavit of an operational plan. Alright, um, so we will get back to you with the date, most likely it's going to be in July. End of July, I would say. Thank you. I do want to say thank you. Every time you do submit response to our board's comments, they are very helpful and thorough. So I expect similar outcome from this discussion for the next hearing. Thank you.
Um, thank you, thank you for the comment. Thank you, appreciate it.
Oh yeah, and I do want updated photos of the, if you're making any improvements between now and July. Any, any changes that happens that you want to bring to our attention, please do update, send updated photos.
Right, definitely, there will be planting done, so there will be new photos coming up, definitely.
Okay, so you will be doing the planting with.
Because weather is now permitting, so it's good to start the plants now, so we will do planting and. Uh, all those necessary things we can do, like installing fence also, we can do all those things now.
Now, if you're going to do the planting, especially whatever you're proposing, just make sure you're, you're meeting the requirements and not just putting. Especially the soil depth for the taller buildings needs to be adequate.
Okay, there's no problem.
And, and whatever you're going to show in the drawings is what should be built. So I'm a little concerned that you're going ahead with the planting before even we see the proposal. Um, but it's a risk you're taking. If it fails, then ten years down the road, you will have to dig it up and dig four foot below or. Or whatever, I think forty two inches or whatever the requirement would be. Now, or above ground, so please. Be consistent with, with the construction as would, would be with the plans.
If we plant evergreen, we will plant it. If there's any other proposal, we come to the board first, then we will plant. So which is a standard like evergreens or these things, we could plant in ground, that should not be a problem with the board. But any new proposal, we will put in front of board first before we plant.
Yeah, I will start, especially with the planting, do come before the board with your proposal before you planted. But anything else that you can do, like the chain link fence, you can do it now. Um, same thing, if you're proposing to, like, you have to do the masonry block, I would say start the process now. Um, so that you can get, get, get the work going. And with the asphalting, I think you can do that now also. So whatever you can do now, do so and show us the progress via photos. The planting, I'm just a little concerned until I see the plans.
No problem, we'll do that. That's it.
Thank you. Item number twenty four, twenty twenty two seventy nine BZ nine thousand Shore Road, Brooklyn. John is passing, Mr. Rebel.
Good afternoon.
Just give us a little bit. Okay, Mr. Rebel, you, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah, do you have a bunch of team people or are you by yourself?
Um, a couple of people, Brian Toose is on, Andrew Foley should be starting, joining the applicant.
Andrew Foley.
Andrew Foley, I don't.
What about Tim Levin or Chi Chan or Chris Mullay?
Yes, Tim Levin, Chi Chan and Chris Mullay are all also part of the team.
Ai Chen. Ai Chang is one, right? And what's the other one?
Uh, Chris Mullay.
Chris. I don't have Chris. I don't have Chris on that.
Uh, we don't see Mr. Mullay.
I have Chris McRae.
Yeah, is.
Anyone who's part of the team for not nine hundred, nine thousand Shore Road? Please raise your hand, please raise your hand.
Applicants team, please raise your hand so that we can recognize, oh, Molly Hogan, Molly Hogan is part of your team?
Yes, Andrew is saying the meeting is expired, I'm wondering.
What?
Having some technical difficulties getting in.
Okay, please let Molly Hogan and Brian Toosey.
I let Brian in already, okay. And Ai Cheng is not, right?
Chi Chan, not Ai Chang, sorry. I think that, um. Mistakenly, Andrew may have registered for the twenty second, which is expired, I think because of the confusion in the. The links on the, on the, the agenda, because there's a second link on the page for the twenty third. Give him a moment maybe to register quickly for this, so he can get in. I'm sorry about the delay.
Yeah, they're looking at the twenty second date.
Is Molly, I, I thought I did change the.
I did allow her. She has a hand up. I did let her in. Timothy is laughing, he's one of them. Mr. Chang is.
Ai Chang continues to be declining, joining as a panelist.
Yeah, Ai, Ai Chang is not a panelist, it would be Chi Chan.
Not one of theirs.
Okay.
Oh, 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 okay. Yeah.
Hold on, um. Andrew will be in, in a moment, very sorry about this, our little confusion on our side.
Do you want to put up the panel that shows the address, the long line for today's?
I, I think it'd be better, Mr. Rebel just emailed on the.
Yeah, I'm emailing him the, the information for today's webinar.
Thank you.
They're going to be sworn in, so do you want their cameras on?
Yeah.
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 We don't, we don't have that rule yet.
We don't have, yeah, they're not. Okay, great. Do we have, okay. And what's the other one?
Timothy Levin, he's in, but his camera's off.
Andrew is joining right now. As we are live texting each other.
Can we start without him or you need him?
Where you want to swear.
He should swear in, yeah.
Andrew Foley.
Andrew Foley, correct?
Yes, correct. Great.
And is Chris McRae your, one of yours?
No.
No, okay, so Mr. McRae, don't allow him in, thank you. Alright, is everyone, is everyone here?
Yes, we have everyone together. Thank you for your patience.
Please unmute, so I can swear you in please, so we can proceed.
Apologies.
That's okay, it happens. Okay, everyone raise your right hand, part of the team, please. Mr. Foley, I don't see your hand. Thank you, sir. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member question?
Yes.
Yes.
Please state your name and proceed.
Barack Rebel. Good afternoon, Commissioners, thank you very much. We reviewed the review session this morning and appreciate the comments made regarding the response. To the concerns that were raised from the January hearing. Um, as noted, our team did work very hard to respond to each of the concerns raised. Submitting option two, which we believe addresses concerns surrounding maneuverability throughout the site. Parking, trash collection, loading, screening and infrastructure. Um, I mean, really for the sake of time, I'm going to hand it right over to Andrew from Jonathan Rose Companies. Uh, who can speak kind of directly and clarify some of the questions that were raised this morning surrounding the screening materiality. And loading and how, how the team believes option two achieves overall better site plan that would be achievable without the special permit. So just. Take it away, Andrew.
Great. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, um, we'll focus in on specifically on addressing the questions from this morning and. Uh, the key findings, particularly the improved site plan, not causing congestion and not having an undue impact on the surrounding community. So to do that, we just wanted to focus in on several areas. Uh, one is the upstated, updated parking study that we submitted. Then we'll get into operations and maneuverability, address some of the questions from this morning session. Uh, talk a bit about the perimeter fencing, I know there are a number of questions there around the lot line condition, so we'll, we'll elaborate on that. And then talk briefly about the impacts on sewer infrastructure. So, uh, you know, in April of last year, we did, we did a study, we, we studied the, the site for six days and did traffic counts in and out. Um, I think that gave us a pretty good sense of peak demand, but as you pointed out, it didn't really give us the. The understanding of who's parking, who's coming out, which parkers are residents. So for, so in this revised study, what we did is we, we picked times where we thought there was. Kind of reliably peak demand and then went out and had our traffic consultant AKRF actually go out and do manual surveys of, of. The cars, they recorded their license plates. And then we compared that data to data we, we have around our residents, our, our employees who are on the site. And some of the other parking users.
I'm so sorry, just like to state for the members of the public who are in the waiting room, we are in the public hearing portion with the applicant making their presentation. Uh, when the applicant is done presenting and the board has wrapped with their questions, we will invite members of the public to testify. You're not there yet, thank you.
So what we ended up doing is we picked, um, uh, an afternoon, there seemed to be peak activity in the afternoon. Um, and then we did overnight, so we did a Wednesday and a Thursday night for three weeks. And also just to, to ensure that there wasn't an anomalous week where, you know, perhaps maybe what we studied last year wasn't reflective of, of the current reality. So a year later, as submitted in, in, in our resubmission. We're showing pretty consistent, if not even less, demand than what was shown in our April submission. Uh, so overall peak demand was thirty nine spaces. Uh, that was during midday on a Wednesday in, in early March. Um, but overall pretty consistent throughout the three weeks. Um, so just to explain this a little bit, it might have been confusing our submission, but. You know, what AKRF did was looked at who had a visible decal and record that. And what they did for cars that didn't have a decal, they took a picture of it. And then we went with our property team and looked at those cars just to make sure that there was somebody who was permitted to park, but didn't have a decal. And so this is the corrected number, we didn't identify a number of cases where somebody didn't have a decal showing, but we knew they were permitted to park. So to that, for our perspective, this is really the, the true permitted parking demand. And also, so. You know, as we've shown, you know, roughly half of the lot remains unutilized and there's a, a portion of parkers. Uh, that were not permitted to park, we couldn't identify who they were, but. You know, a fairly manageable amount and still even all considered, um, not a significant portion of the parking lot. So this is the detail that we were really looking for in this round, was to understand who, who is parking. So you can see the, the residents, which really, you know, come first in, in our minds. Uh, you could see the utilization by our residents is quite low. Property staff, you can see during the days, we have five to six vehicles parking of property staff. And at night, usually one or two, our, our superintendent has a vehicle. And, you know, we saw a pretty, when you add these two together, you see a pretty consistent. Demand of twenty seven, twenty eight spaces utilized by our residents and our staff. Uh, we also have the two clinics, the Rusk Rehab NYU, that also includes resident service coordinators, some service vehicles. We allow ambulance, their ambulance to park overnight, they have a shuttle that we allow to park overnight and then Columbia Doctors. Um, which is also on Shore Road. Um, so I think this revealed some things that we're going to correct moving forward. So I think this revealed some things that we're going to correct moving forward. For example, we think, you know, we have this parking decal system where we issue decals. What we realized is that particularly for users like Rusk Rehab, they were given decals, but sometimes those decals were used, were taken by people who don't park there frequently. So we think these are probably undercounted candidly and that, you know, moving forward, I think what we're going to shift towards is giving more decals, but then designated spaces. So that staff who didn't get a decal still have the opportunity to park. And as this data shows, we think there's plenty of room to accommodate those folks. Unidentified were people we believe to be residents in the neighborhood who continue to park, also guests who occasionally park, but you know, we can, I know there was a question about enforcement, you know, we have not towed anybody. We've decided at this point not not to do that. I think move, we're, we've also decided not to put input input a like a new gate system, because we think that also creates a bear, it creates a barrier for people to utilize the parking lot. And so we think on balance, the thing to do is just get these numbers tight. We have we have pictures of these vehicles, and I think we can then start doing enforcement on a on a on a case by case basis. So that 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 covers parking any. Please feel free to jump off any questions, but if not, we'll move on to operations maneuverability.
Go ahead.
Okay, so as was discussed discussed this morning, we looked at two options. This is a revised version of what we initially submitted. We made some adjustments, you know, there was some comments from the public, which we thought were good points about creating a little bit more of a buffer between the traffic refuse area. We adjusted for maneuverability this plan a little bit. So this is this is pretty much what we proposed with some adjustments. You could see we also did a flat condition here. There was a tree, I think, initially here, but we realized for maneuverability, best to kind of keep this as a flat condition with bollards to just give this area more room for maneuverability. We looked at an alternate version, which we're recalling all option two. And I'll get into that a little bit and why we actually think that this is probably on balance, the the right approach, but it, what this does is it extends parking into the courtyard to create an area where you could actually do a a turn and maneuver in and out a little bit more easily. And I'll speak to why we believe that has some benefit. In terms of just parking overall.
I just have a question. The area where you're proposing to add this additional turnaround area is currently just a paved surface, right?
It is open space.
Okay.
And I'll 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 show some some slides here on that in a moment. On passenger vehicles, the AKRF team did plenty of turning studies to show that cars can use easily maneuver in and out of the parking lot. This is the alternate version. Also, you know, all this was designed to provide adequate clearance for cars to move in and out. We heard from the board particular concern about the turning in this area here. And so just to clarify from this morning, yes, that this is the travel lane of sixteen feet, little over sixteen feet, but this is a flat condition of twenty one feet. And so while we're showing turning radius is not relying on this area, we were comforted that there's additional room for vehicles to maneuver without hitting a curb by us having a shared street condition. The we did look at angled parking here, but unfortunately, it does lose one space, and we just know how important it is to preserve every particular space. So our preference is to continue with the ten stalls here on the south of the building instead of the nine stalls. Um, we look.
I think it's clarifying maybe to to Chair Chanda's question. In the option one, that area was hardscape. Although it was open space, so I think changing it to parking area doesn't really change the amount of impervious surfaces. If that was
Good point.
Okay, thank you.
Correct, got. So we studied the trash, as we told before, we're moving to these these new refuse compacting containers, which are just more efficient. They're more on demand and and just a better overall approach. A lot of buildings across the city are moving to this, and the Department of Sanitation is really promoting it. You know, we've we've looked at the the anticipated demand. We think there may be an additional trip, but these are, you know, it's it's based on the utilization and the amount of waste that's generated, which we've reviewed with DS NY. In terms of turning, we can demonstrate that the vehicles are able to move in and out pretty easily. So we don't see any issues with them. We also reviewed this with Departments of Sanitation. You know, last year in developing this plan before our application submission, they're they're comfortable that their vehicles can maneuver in and out of the site. When we talked about, so shuttles, this is where it got interesting. This is where our thinking started to change a little bit. So this is our resident shuttle that makes several pickups and drop offs per day for our residents. And clearly, you could currently, you can see there's a small bench here and residents are asked to gather here for pickup. And then the the vehicle currently kind of comes in and out on Colonial. You know, we we acknowledge this is not a great pickup and drop off for our residents. There's a curb, and so particularly our residents' wheelchairs have a difficult time getting in and out. So we we recognize there's a real, there's a benefit to to providing a better loading zone for for our resident shuttle. Also, as it's been pointed out by the community, there are accessory rides and other types of private operators that come and pick up residents and take them to a variety of senior centers in the area. And, you know, it's been pointed out by the community, and as we looked at it, we realized it was a really good point is that currently, you know, what's causing congestion now is that, you know, these vehicles load on this side of the street. And because this is a one way road, you can see that residents to enter this vehicle have to go into the middle of the street to get on. And particularly for residents in wheelchairs, that could that could cause some traffic to queue up as this is happening. So a key goal of this plan is to get not only our current resident shuttle, but all of these larger vehicles into the parking lot to reduce congestion along Ninety First Street. So how do we do that? And this is where I think led to option two. So currently in option one, because of the need to load on the right side of the vehicle, what we're contemplating is that in option one, the vehicle would come in and then back into this area, and that this provides a landing zone where residents and wheelchairs have plenty of room to get in and out of of the van. So it is doable. But we all, we just, you know, we felt like perhaps there's a better way. And, you know, in this site plan, it was just really challenging to come up with an alternative. So it led to an all, an alternate plan, which is when we extend this in, allowing this larger vehicle to make a turn, as you see here. It it opens up the ability for that passenger via vehicle to actually load and unload closer to the community center, which we think is a big win for our residents. It also kind of lessens some of the congestion in the middle of the site. And provides a really clean in and out for for this vehicle. It also opens up another area that could be used for queuing in the unlikely event there's two you know, passenger vehicles at one point, it provides a place where they can sit and idle while they're waiting for unloading, which again pulls that traffic off of Ninety First Street or wherever those vehicles would have been parking in into the parking lot to reduce congestion. And then lastly, as was pointed out this morning, we're also proposing that we add some daytime loading zones. So currently, there is an existing no standing zone in front of the West Building, which is used for pickup and drop off. And we think it's a useful thing, given the, you know, the proximity to the lobby. What we're proposing is to to work with DOT to propose a second one for this building. We think that that would further reduce potential congestion on Ninety First Street. We're thinking mostly like Ubers and that type of pickup, drop off traffic. And also proposing a daytime loading zone in front of the new building. So we did reach out to DOT to express our interest in applying for that, and they gave us some clarity on the process. We have not actually applied yet. We wanted to have this hearing first, but our intent, if you support it, would be to move forward with first applying for a DOT neighborhood loading zone here. And then we're told that it's not until the building is actually built that they will review a loading zone for this building. So we're also proposing that this is currently a no standing anytime zone. We're actually intend to propose to DOT that we make both of these daytime neighborhood loading that permits both of these areas to be used for overnight parking where we understand there's peak street parking demand. So we feel like it's a good trade and and minimizes the loss of street parking for the neighborhood, and will all overall reduce congestion on Ninety First Street.
So in terms of the hours daytime, you're basically saying the nighttime is the peak. So you the the drop off pickup will be only during the daytime period. And what is that hour that you're proposing or considering?
Tim, I've got Tim here from AKRF. I believe it's eight AM to, or maybe it's seven AM to seven PM or eight AM to eight PM, we can, we can clarify.
Yeah, I'm not sure the exact hours, but we can confirm that with DOT.
Yeah, but they are standard, it is a standard designated type of loading and unloading that has fixed hours.
Okay, okay. So it's a standard, I think it's seven to seven.
Seven to seven, yeah, that sounds right.
It's seven to seven, not eight to eight. Okay, go ahead, sorry.
So I think, you know, we, so this is the landscape site plan, just to illustrate the the initial option, option one. And you can see we had this east courtyard that was intended to be a third activated area for the existing building. This is the revised plan, just to show you how it looks. I think our landscape team did a great job of and our civil team of minimizing the amount of space needed for for the parking areas and still creating a nice active area. I think ultimately it comes down to trade offs and what is in this improved site plan. This does reduce the amount of space that our residents can use for programming. But we also, we just, we believe that on balance, the the improvements to the circulation within the site outweigh those benefits. And so I think our, we wanted to present two options to the board for discussion and get your direction on this. But I think from our perspective, we we see option two ultimately being an overall better plan because of the maneuverability and and the loading.
Is that the end of your presentation?
Um, I've got a little bit more on perimeter fencing, if you'd like me to keep going.
Please.
So what, so just, I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. So this is the current north perimeter fence. You can see there's about a two foot existing stone wall and then a a fence on top of it. When we surveyed it, this wall actually kind of maneuvers in and out. And so there's actually moments where it it appears that this fence is actually on neighbors' property. And so our initial plan was to put a a new fence on top of the stone wall, but based on that, we decided just as a more conservative case to put a new eight foot fence on the interior of the stone wall. We understand it's a it's a cool stone wall. We think our neighbors like it. We like it, so we don't, we we'd rather not demolish it. So we thought this was a good compromise where it encloses our parking areas and in other areas and leaves this on the neighbor's side, because, you know, in in certain areas, this is actually fencing that we believe has been put up by neighbors and they, you know, may have different ideas on what what kind of fence they'd like to be looking at. And so we think this, we think this is the best overall solution for our neighbors and for our parking lot. This is just an illustrative fence material. We're not looking to do, you know, we're looking to do a nice fence, the showing like an acrylic fence that, you know, doesn't have a lot of pass-through, so it's designed to to, you know, buffer noise, buffer car lights, all of that. So that's what we're proposing. You can see a section here. This is, this is within the parking lot. In the refuse area, this is just an illustration of what we're intending to do here, again, with this new eight foot tall fence. And and then particularly around the refuse area, buffering it with as much screening plant material as possible. And then another enclosure wall here for the trash enclosure. And again, the 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 specs provided by DSMY dictate about luckily about an eight foot high trash enclosure. So we we think that it this fence will screen the trash. And then just to clarify where we're looking to do perimeter fencing. We're actually planning to replace the perimeter fencing all along the northern boundary in this area here. So that that is our plan to have new fence throughout, not just in the areas where there's parking. One little caveat here, and maybe we appreciate your guidance here, but you know, when we were looking at our neighbor here, the guild, you know, here's a picture. You know, they actually have elected to remove some fence, I think, to provide more light and air to their living areas. And so, you know, we we could just propose that as a baseline, we would just have the the fence go all the way to the end. We're certainly happy to do that. But we also wanted to have a conversation with the guild about potentially not having the fence continue here. Because as you can see here, you know, we've removed lot line windows here. So this is going to be a pretty private area, and we thought the guild may prefer to have this field open to get more light and air than have it, you know, a fence going throughout. And so I think that's something we want to have, we're still early in design, but it was something we were hoping to leave open to a conversation with our neighbor to see what they preferred and would do what they felt was best.
I I really do have to thank you for being so thoughtful about your neighbors' need and what they would like. And have you engaged in any discussion with them?
No, we we have not.
Go ahead.
And then lastly, just to touch on sewer infrastructure, we 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 understand from comments this morning that, and we agree that that there are, there are a lot of legitimate issues being raised about neighbors, about impacts that they're having in their their homes. And I think from our, we we know that there is a further conversation with DEP to be had as we gear up to submit our site connection plans with DEP. I think in terms of the, for this plan, I think we're, we believe we're demonstrating a improved site plan by showing a pretty dramatic reduction in stormwater flows. We have revised our plan from our last hearing to reflect some of the comments that the board provided, which we think has resulted in a better plan. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Tim at AKRF to quickly take us through it.
Thanks, Andrew. Thanks to the board. So just really briefly, the the existing condition, there's an existing detention system on the, within the parking lot that discharges to Colonial. And the sanitary flows from the existing buildings are connected to Ninety First Street. So with the new development, what we're proposing to do is change the detention system. Andrew, can you go to the next one? So we're going to change the detention system to handle the entire property, because previously we had talked about taking the existing site and diverting it to Ninety First Street. And we heard from the neighborhood that that there were already concerns on Ninety First, so we don't want to add anything additional. So as far as Ninety First Street flows go from the site, we're keeping it exactly the way it is today. So we're taking all the stormwater from the entire site, and we're putting it into a much larger stormwater detention system and connecting that to Colonial. And with the new unified stormwater rules implemented by the DEP, those outflows are being dramatically reduced from a an overall design perspective, and it's codified for, you know, it's required that we have to do that. So the the sanitary flow from the new building is also going to connect to Colonial. But with the the combined flows of both storm and sanitary, we're still proposing a dramatic reduction of almost forty percent of the runoff leaving the property. Which is a baseline. So that's a maximum outflow that we'll have from the site with green infrastructure practices and trying to infiltrate and following the unified stormwater rule requirements for DEP. That will likely be lower than that. It's just hard to quantify that number at the moment. So when we go through our process with DEP, that'll get ironed out and we'll have solid numbers and, you know, it'll be a dramatic reduction of what's actually leaving the property.
Yeah. And we just want to flag for the community who we know are are very concerned about stormwater, and we think there's a lot of good points there. But this is not just us as developers saying this is what we're proposing to do. This is under the new unified stormwater rule or requirement. So what what Tim just outlined is what DEP is going to hold us. So what, what Tim just outlined is what DEP is going to hold us accountable to doing. And that's going to result in a pretty dramatic reduction in flow. And I, I understand it's counterintuitive to think that an empty parking lot would have more impact on stormwater than a new building. But that's, that's, that's how it works. And so it's gonna, it's gonna ultimately result, um, we know it won't address uh, uh, some of the issues that are individual residents are experiencing, but we think this project will lessen the issues that, that are being impacted in the neighborhood.
Right, exactly.
So now we're, now we're wrapped up.
Um, thank you, that was a very helpful discussion, um, uh, I mean, the presentation. I um, I'm glad, I, I think the plan then, um, if you could provide a little bit more information on the plan with regards to the length of the fence that you're proposing. And I would, you know, oh, I do have one clarification to ask regarding your neighbor, um, um, the window. You said there aren't any windows on the proposed building um, that is facing that open area?
Correct, initially, we, we did have some windows at the ground floor and then residents above, but we've since removed those for, to improve privacy for, for that homeowner.
Oh, okay, so it would be completely of um, green open space that your neighbor will be looking into and not into anybody's windows or, and vice versa.
Correct.
Um, uh, just give me one second. I would say, um, I, I think definitely, um, I mean, you already have the two foot high stone wall, right?
Correct.
You're suggesting maybe ending the fence up to that residential uh, that window? And then letting it be?
Correct, let me just share my screen again in that, so yeah, because, cause, so all of this wall, this, this, there's no windows on this wall in our, in our plan. So from, and then there's windows here and a few, you know, so one option would be to, to end the fence or curb the fence in some way, so that all of this um, was effectively, you know, private with no, no one looking in. Um, again, we, we don't want to presume on behalf of that owner, what they prefer. They may prefer having a fence, so.
I mean, you do realize the neighbor's window, um, it may be a pre-existing non-complying um, kind of condition and you're not obligated to, but I appreciate that you are consider, giving consideration to your neighbors want to have a, a window with uh, with light and air and you're factoring that in. Um, I am indifferent, honestly. I think my biggest concern is the portion of the area where you have the parking and the trash enclosure. Um, and that the fact that you're proposing extended amount of uh, additional fencing and buffering. And the area where the residents are going to be sitting in the rear, providing the, also buffering there for their need and also providing another layer of buffering, uh, abutting uh, to the abutting residents. I think those are all good suggestions. Um, I am indifferent. I think it's whatever your outcome with your neighbor becomes is uh, and, and that is viable for your operation that allows for adequate safety and security and meets all the other regulatory controls. I know you have the next phase of meeting city planning's large scale thing. So I don't know what the requirements there are from the prior ground. So I am open to either solution, provided it meets all the regulation or all the controls and meets the operational need of your program.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner Sheta, you had your hands up.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I thank you for the clarification regarding the extent of the fence. That's very helpful, but the reason I um, I, I understood that it's a, it's kind of like just for the parking portion is the kind of the language there, it says screening around parking. So I got the impression that it's just for the parking, especially it's a pointing to where the parking is. So if you can just change that kind of language.
Yeah, good point.
Put, put what kind of construction for the fence and the height of the fence. Put some information about the construction if possible and the height of the fence, so it's a.
Commissioner Sheta, it's in the statement of facts, uh, where that statement is written or was it in the cover letter?
It's on the drawings, it says screening around parking.
I see, okay, so definitely.
And when I looked there, I said, oh, okay, so this is just for park.
Got it.
And that's why I asked them to extend it probably fifteen feet right and left. But now from the presentation, I understand that it's extending.
The entire.
From the big, yes, entire property line.
So do revise those drawings accordingly, um, to be consistent with what you're, what you presented and make, uh, and ensure that your statement of facts also reflects those elements.
The other point regarding the, the stormwater thing, uh, just for my curiosity, uh, that did the change result from the increased detention uh, slash storage space that's being provided onsite or uh, did it result from like adapting the best management practices that are like required by DEP nowadays?
The, the increased detention system size was based on the change from just managing a smaller portion of the site versus the entire site. Um, we're not incorporating the best management practices of DEP yet as that needs to be designed and we haven't gotten that for yet. So the, the stormwater management practices, the BMPs will be um, in addition to the stormwater detention system and will reduce outflow further from what we're capping as the maximum.
That's what I wanted you to clarify. So it is anticipated that it's going to be even beyond forty percent reduction.
That, that's correct. It's just difficult to quantify without doing the actual design, but that's the maximum we're allowed to uh, um, to discharge from the site with the current DEP regulations. And, and we're already at a nearly forty percent reduction, which I think is pretty significant, given the site.
I agree, it is, thank you.
Thank you. So you could just also put that as a clarification in your documents, not that, you know, as part of your site plan, but. Any other questions or comments from the commissioner, Commissioner Yun?
I mean, we had, no, I think they've answered everything that I brought up. Thank you, it was very thorough presentation, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so let's go to the public and um, could you please share the presentation? Uh, submit that to the board?
Absolutely.
Thank you, um.
Ms. Matthias, is your microphone on?
Sorry, thank you. Twenty twenty-two seventy-nine BZ, nine thousand Shore Road, Brooklyn. If you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six or a toll-free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter the webinar ID number eight four zero six six three six three seven three two and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. If you're in the Zoom room already and wish to discuss this matter, please raise your Zoom hand, which is a small hand at the bottom of your screen. Once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes. There are three people currently that I'm calling in.
Ms. Matthias, we, we should ask if, if there are any elected representatives.
Beckman is the community board representative, but if there's any elected officials, please raise your hand. Is there any elected officials and identify yourselves, I don't know.
There could be a representative of an elected official.
Chris McCray.
I think Chris.
Chris McCray is a, yes, okay, Mr. McCray, I recognize that one, okay. Okay, so Mr. Wright, if you're elected official or representing elected official, you can, um, why is this not coming on? Sorry. Lemon, um, it's Chris. Yeah, you want to mute and speak? Oh, he's not.
I'm, I think, I believe I'm muted, right?
Yeah, you are, Mr. Price, sorry.
I don't think my camera's working, possibly?
No, it's, it's just a, a, uh, just a photo, but we can hear you clear.
Okay, great, perfect, okay. Um, so thank you, my name is Chris McCray. I'm a Councilman Brandon's Chief of Staff, Councilman Brandon's chairing a finance committee uh, hearing right now. So I'm here to speak on his behalf. Um, I'd like to start by saying that we share the commissioner's goal here to uh, create more affordable housing in the city. Um, affordable housing is something, especially for seniors, we hear a lot from local residents um, that need. They also say nobody from Bay Ridge can get into Shore Hill. So for residents um, of Bay Ridge, this project right now has only brought a lot of concerns um, and a lot of uh, no real benefits to the local community. Um, so we have concerns about that. Um, I want to thank the commissioners for taking the time to hear from the public. Um, please note um, um, that their concerns are not NIMBY. Um, this is, um, I know you hear from people all the time and a lot of times that is the case. This is not one of them. I also want to point out that the community board ten voted to oppose this application because it didn't meet um, the required findings of ZR seven three four three four. Um, I, I really share their concerns regarding the sewage backup issues and the parking implications and the parking study itself, um, which has so many issues um, that it's sort of cast in initial doubt on a lot of the other application, uh, rest of that, rest of the application. Um, after meeting with DEP, uh, which we did a few months ago, um, CV ten did a survey in the surrounding area. Um, I think Josephine will talk about a little later. Um, in the surrounding area regarding sewage backup and received over ninety responses indicating a sewage, that they've had sewage backup problems. Within those ninety responses, uh, seventy of them were from unique addresses, which means, in other words, these, just about every house near Shore Hill has experienced some sewage backup. And it's important to remind the commissioners that these backups occur during dry weather often. So while we appreciate the applicant's um, attempt to create the, the better outdoor drainage um, for, for, for storm runoff, um, that not, won't necessarily have an impact on the sewage backup problem and an additional hundred and thirty-seven units. Um, it's really only going to make that problem worse. Um, looking forward on this project without a full DEP study on the effects and potential effects of uh, the sewage backup could really be a disaster that um, could be avoided if we, if we go about this in a deliberate fashion. Um, regarding parking, I have mentioned the parking study has some, the original parking study had many credibility, credibility issues and amidst some of the real problems that Shore Hill already has um, in terms of the community. Uh, we look forward to looking at the data from the new parking study that allegedly shows less demand, which is very, 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 can't overstated enough, very hard to believe that there's even less demand now. Um, it's hard to believe that the applicant is committed to making the traffic better for the community when many of their proposals could already be in place today um, to mitigate those traffic backups that are already happening.
That's right.
Um, parking has actually gotten worse in the surrounding area in recent years.
Ms. McCray, okay, um, everyone will get an opportunity to speak, so please don't call out or anything else. So finish your testimony, right, sorry.
Parking has actually gotten worse in the surrounding area in recent years. Uh, this can be directly traced to new policies, policies, um, policies of Shore Hill that have are potentially been put in place to help with a study to get a result that um, would be favorable. Um, but it's also due to the new um, NYU rehab center that serves the surrounding community, not just Shore Hill residents. Um, I've actually gone there myself. Since the rehab, rehab rehabilitation center is in a transit dense, transit desert, it is reasonable to expect that people undergoing rehab may not be able to walk, walk long distances to the center. Um, and I, I finally, I just want to point out, the last hearing, um, there was some confusion after the applicant testified that people who lived nearby were upset that they weren't allowed to park in the lot anymore. And that's the reason that some people might be opposing this project. Um, I, I just want to say that that's really not the case. The people who are not allowed to, the, the community never really was allowed to park in the lot. The people who are now not allowed to park in the lot include, include home attendants, visiting nurses, nurses, meals on wheels, et cetera. People who actually do work or business or are visiting on the center. Um, not only does that change in policy by not allowing those people to park there anymore, um, have an effect of creating more competition for on-street parking. It allows for a parking study that undercounts the parking lot demands in Shore Hill itself. Again, I just want to thank the commissioners for taking time to listen to the public. Please listen to their concerns and thank you for everything that you do.
Ms. Beckman, can you, uh?
Thank you, uh, Mr. McCray. Do you, uh, will you be submitting this, what you read um, or um, to the board, just for our record?
That's Councilman Brennan.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, thank you, okay. Ms. Beckman?
Thank you, um, thank you, commissioners. My name is Josephine Beckman and I am the district manager of community board ten. I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Um, I would like to also um, update the BSA on two key issues raised following the January hearing. Um, I would like to remind members of the board that community board ten voted to oppose this application because it did not meet the findings of ZR seven three dash four three four. Um, we did receive the updated packet, but the members of the board have not had the opportunity um, to review it as a, as a body. So community board ten believes that ZR seven three four thirty-four parking reduction will have an undue adverse impact on the residents, businesses and nearby community facilities. The undue adverse impacts include the sewage backup issues, traffic congestion that parking reduction has caused and added parking impacts that will occur if this project moves forward. So Chris McCray spoke a little bit about um, our outreach to members of the community following the January meeting. And, and we have had the opportunity to speak to over a hundred residents. So I want to speak first a little bit about the parking impacts and the applicant's um, presentation today. The, in what we've heard from residents really is that the applicant has changed the policy of who can park in the parking garage. And that the zoning tax does not limit the ability to park in a parking facility based on car ownership. And that's what's happened here. So residents of nine thousand Shore Road um, can only park if they have a car. So family members, friends, visiting nurses, home attendants, people who care for people in this building are not permitted to use the parking facility and are not reflected um, in the parking analysis that was provided by the applicant today. Um, traffic congestion on ninety first street, the applicant admits is an issue, it remains an issue. The no standing anytime area reference in the applicant's report, the first one closest to Shore Road is a daylighting spot. That spot must remain open and free of traffics because it, it enables safety for pedestrians to safely cross Shore Road, which has been identified as seniors um, in that area as a problem. Um, what we also heard from residents is that there has been an increase in illegal parking in the surrounding area of Shore Hill. And this, they feel strongly correlates between time changes were made. I happened to take a look at three one one data on illegal parking complaints in the immediate area and found some interesting data points. Um, overall, in the parking perimeter area, um, we looked at the years twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-two. In twenty nineteen, there were four hundred service requests for the parameter of Shore Road to Third Avenue and eighty-fifth street to Marine Avenue. In twenty nineteen, there were four hundred three one one service requests for illegal parking and by twenty twenty-two, there were seven hundred. In the area immediately adjacent to Shore Hill, eighty-ninth street to ninety-first street and Shore Road to Colonial Road, in twenty eighteen, there were seventeen service requests for illegal parking. In twenty twenty-two, there were fifty-four. And that is a very big difference and it, it really kind of reflects what residents are telling us is that there is more traffic congestion, that, you know, the expanded use of the NYU facility um, does have a lot more people. It is a transit desert and this, this must be looked at. Um, and seven three four thirty-four um, speaks to this. Um, this added traffic congestion caused by an additional hundred and thirty-seven units will just make that, you know, more difficult. And while I appreciate um, the applicants wanting to add additional no standing um, within specific times of the day for loading and unloading, that really hasn't worked. Um, not in community district ten. Unfortunately, um, as you could see reflected in the illegal parking data has added, continues to add for traffic congestion, um, which is a finding in seven three four thirty-four. Um, I also wanted to speak a little bit about the um, section D, that such reduction will not have undue adverse effects on residents, businesses or community facilities. You know, when DQA was first adopted um, by the city council, members of community board ten were concerned that the addition of building, um, especially in a parking lot would not require a full environmental impact statement. And what we've heard from residents is about the sewage backups they are facing. And respectfully, while I appreciate the stormwater um, plan that was proposed by the applicant, this is very different from what we're hearing on the ground from residents. The problem is with the sewage conveyance system. There was no discussion um, by the applicant about the loads and the sewage loads um, and their impact to an already fragile um, sewage infrastructure, um, building, you know, system that we are working with DEP. We have identified sixty nearby. We have identified sixty nearby residents who are experiencing sewage backups, both in dry weather and in wet weather. And the sewer outfalls that are located nearby Shore Road were negatively impacted during, you know, large coastal storms like Sandy and many that followed. And we feel, after speaking to residents and to the Department of Environmental Protection, that there may be a serious problem with the conveyance system in this area, and I respectfully request that the BSA do view this as an adverse effect and impact. Not to do so, I think, would be arbitrary because it does, it will have an impact. And as far as community facilities, there is a nearby community facility that provided testimony to this board, as well as to the BSA, and that is the Guild, which is located immediately next door. And it was their testimony before Community Board Ten that, that this project would create a negative, would have negative impacts on their community facility. Another finding of the statute. And I do ask that the board members, you know, do review that. This is not an as-of-right project. It may be in terms of, you know, density, but this project cannot move forward without the BSA special permit in the reduction of parking spaces that must meet the four findings. And Community Board Ten, while supportive of senior housing, did feel that, that the application did not meet the findings as prescribed in the zoning statute. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Ms.
Are there any elected officials or anyone else? Anyone else is elected, then I'll think so. Guard Julio? No, I'm just saying she's a member of the public. Ms. Guard Julio? All right, let me, Joanna Joseph.
Hi. I'm a resident of the area for some time now, and we feel that the applicant does not meet the finding of the parking zone required.
Ma'am, can you please state your name?
Sure, I'm Joanna Joseph.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Okay. I represent over a hundred families who have come together because we have already feeling the impact of the changes done by the Ross Company. And it has been stated before, i.e. Ninety First Street not being able to permit from Ninety First Street into their parking lot, which could be a really reasonable result if they just remove the barriers right now and will free up a lot of places on Ninety First Street where people don't feel the need to park in front of the fire hydrant at the moment. We came together, the community, and we raised enough funds to hire our own engineering company. And we would like the Board of Appeals to give us an opportunity to to have our parking analysis be presented to them in about six weeks, if the board would allow us to do so. Because we would really like the opportunity for you to see it from our perspective, the people who live here, who are impacted by it, and not just because of what you're hearing the applicant say. Another thing that we would, we would request the Board of Appeals to take into consideration is that, that though that the applicant is making provisions, Ninety First Street loading zone will not be, will even impact us even more so. And maybe we should have, they should have a look at that. As well as, Bay Ridge has always been a community that has welcomed senior citizens for over fifty years, as is demonstrated by the two buildings that has been there for some time now. We have never shied away from this and our responsibility to the seniors in this community. However, we feel that if this building is to be constructed, it will have a negative effect on other members of our community that we hold just as equally as seniors, i.e. the gilded. Commissioner talked about Section D in the findings that you need to take into consideration when having this proposal move forward. And though I am glad to hear that the applicant is opening up the area and making it more green for them, he didn't mention anything about the shadow that's going to be cast over their house when this building is constructed. And that sunlight taken away can have an adverse negative effect on the adults that live there, that are very fragile and are a very intricate part of our community. And we would like the BSA to take that into consideration when approving this approving this building. So we respectfully.
Minutes are up. Please wrap up. You can always submit your statement to us. We will read it.
We respectfully ask that the board allow us the six weeks to be able to provide our report on our parking engineering study.
I just want to say that the applicant is the, the team of the Shore Housing. And it is their responsibility to conduct the study. It is their responsibility to provide the analysis for our consideration. And based on what they have submitted, the board here, I think I speak for the board, has, has met the findings and, and you're welcome to do the study, but it's, it is not part of our review and part of our findings. The finding is for the applicant to prove and provide and which.
So the, so the residents does not get a say in this, even though we live here?
I'm so sorry. Your three minutes are up, and I'd just like to make it clear for everyone listening. The board is not requesting, and the board, the board is has not and is not requesting that any members of the public engage in a traffic study or parking demand study or spend any money putting forth that. Only members of the applicant team are tasked with meeting their burden to make that finding. We have evidence in the record to that effect. It is the board's review of the applicant's submission to find whether the applicant has substantiated their burden. It is not the public's burden to negate the applicant's burden, essentially, but the applicant's burden to make their record. So I just want to make it clear, the board is not asking, directing, or welcoming any members of the public to spend money to do something that is not their burden. That, that being said, anything that is submitted for the board to review will be reviewed by the board. But we are not asking members of the public to engage in a parking demand study.
Anyone else? Anyone else is wishing?
Ms. Guard Julio, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Can you hear me?
Please state your name and you have three minutes to speak.
Sure. My name is Rochelle Guard Julio. I'm a resident on Ninety Second Street, close to the building. Thank you for taking my questions. I guess the question is, why is the developer squeezing another building into a small area, creating problems for the surrounding foundations? Creating additional sewer problems, creating additional parking problems, and affecting our community. That's number one. Number two is Mr. Foley talking about the parking area and putting this whole beautiful presentation together, which, if you, any of the board members were to see, it's a very small area. They're actually squeezing this huge building in a very small space. You can see by their diagrams that even when you're traveling, the vehicles, the drop off, the pickup, there's just not enough space. There's just not enough space. I come home all hours of the night, never any parking. So he is actually not telling the truth about the parking situation bec- because it's terrible. The pickup and drop off on Ninety First Street, they block the whole street. The residents, the delivery people, they drop off bottles and, and they make a mess. And even their employees are not allowed to park on their facility, which I don't understand. So that he's actually, they're actually lying to us and the public and to the board about the parking. It's, it's not sufficient and it's going to impact the community terribly. And I'd like to know if any of the board members live in the community, in the area. Probably not. Maybe they should take a look at the space that they want to build, this huge building. And I'd like to know why the developer wants to squeeze another building into the parking area. Because I'm assuming that the taxpayer is paying most of it. And if the taxpayer is not happy with it, then they should have a voice. And also the activity room for the senior. My mother's a senior. It looks smaller, and how is it going to accommodate all these extra residents? And I also have a question to the board. Who is going to be living there? Is it going to be everyone over sixty five? Are you putting homeless people here? Are you, I mean, who is actually going to be living in this building? We need to know. Is it going to affect the value of our homes? There's a lot to, to find out. And to me, my personal opinion, I spent a lot of money on my home. And I think the developer, all they're interested in is money. They want to put this building up just to get extra money from the taxpayer. Because the taxpayer is putting the bill.
Ms. Guard Julio, thank you very much. You're over your three-minute time. You can submit.
So the board needs.
To us. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Anyone else who hasn't spoken before?
I don't believe we have any.
No, 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 hands up. Sorry, no, any hands up. Okay. I just want to, I want to thank everybody for calling in from the community and expressing your concern. The, the board has to review this and this project based on the findings that is before us. And what, what has transpired as part of the ZQA, we cannot speak to that. It is what it is before the board. And it, the proposed project is specific to one element, which is replacement of parking for affordable housing. And the applicant has a soft commitment letter from HPD to provide housing that would meet the SARAH housing component for the, and if they, should they be granted, they will have to meet the requirements of the funding program. That is not before us. It is, we are satisfied to see that there is a soft commitment letter from HPD. With regards to the statement that I had stated, and I want to clarify it for the record, is we are not asking the public to do any further study. Should you do it, and should you submit the proposal, we will review it. But we are not asking the community to do that because we believe the applicant has met the findings that, that this particular section of the zoning resolution required.
And we're not going to schedule this application based on the public's willingness or, or request to submit a parking study. Apologies.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Sheta.
Yeah, just want to clarify about something because I feel that like people are confused regarding the sewage issue. I, I got the feeling that people are looking at stormwater and sewer system, sewer system, sewage drainage as two separate components. According to the submission from the applicant on this project, the sewer system in, in this area is what we call a combined sewer, meaning that it handles both the sewage as well as the stormwater. And, and according to the submission from the applicant, the combined flow for both the two components is, is going to be less, but, but by about forty percent. So just wanted to clarify this because I, I felt that people are saying, yes, okay, stormwater will be reduced. However, sewer is, is going to be the same, and we're having an issue with the sewer. Again, clear, based on the submission and the numbers submitted, what the applicant is asserting before us is the combined load, including sewage and stormwater, are going to be less by about forty percent. Just to want, wanted to make this clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board for the applicant?
Does the applicant team want to confirm Commissioner Sheta's statement? To the community?
Yeah, confirming that the, the combined flow leaving the site from the new development will be reduced by almost forty percent over the current outflow to Colonial Road.
Thank you.
And I, I can clarify about this, Commissioner Sheta, again. I can clarify about the submission. It's that what is submitted on May nines, twenty twenty three. It's called existing and proposed stormwater plans. And I'm talking about page two of two and one of two of the PDF. Sheet C dash two hundred. It clearly indicates that the combined flow, including sewage and store, are going to be reduced by, by about forty percent. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to ask one question, and that is regarding the on-street, there are, there is already no parking or no standing in two of the locations along Ninety First. Right?
There is an one no standing in front of the West Building. We're proposing to add an additional one to kind of mirror the one that, that exists for and used by residents of the West Building.
Does the applicant team want to respond to any of the comments made by the community?
Just one thing to, two things to note. One, around the closure of Ninety First Street, we've heard that come up a lot. It's been implied that that's like a tactic to suppress parking. It's actually due to facade work that is, needs to be scheduled to meet local law requirements. So it was actually a public safety requirement to close that component. So while we're talking, I've reached out to our property team to get a status on how all that work is going on, but it was not done to, as a result of the parking studies. It's just something we have to do to protect our residents. The second note that was around the community facility spaces in the community center not having enough capacity for a new building. The new building will have its own community room and amenities that, that meet and exceed the requirements of building a new affordable senior housing building. And so I think that is also something we just wanted to correct.
And how does that change in terms of that therefore they will by the new building will have its own community room? And how does that address the concern of the community?
There was an implication that, you know, the, the existing facilities for the existing buildings don't have enough capacity for the new residents. So just clarifying that the new residents will have their own facilities.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to follow up this by share, she better again. There was a statement made with regard to not permitting your employees to park in those spaces. Do you want to elaborate on that community concern?
No, that is not true. I mean, I, I think there have been times where we've had to, all, all employees have been issued parking decals. You know, since last year, we've had to kind of be a little stricter about enforcing it to make sure everybody is parking on site. But if any employee is not parking on site, they're not following the policies of the property.
I'm satisfied with that response. Any questions or comments? Where are we? Where are we on the, do we have any? Tracy, do we have any? Ms. Benke, is there any, anything that I need to know on the environmental review?
We're awaiting a response. The phase two testing, excuse me, the phase two testing, if they could give us a status update.
Who, who, who are you waiting for, for status update?
The applicant.
The applicant, okay. All right. So can you please respond to Ms. Benke's question as to what's the status?
Sure, we're, we're working, we're working with the consultants to schedule the work. I think we wanted to get through the, the parking studies themselves because I think sometimes that work requires the parking lot to be closed. And, you know, there's just a lot of suspicion around whenever we close the parking lot. So we wanted to get through this before scheduling additional required and testing for for the phase two.
Thank you.
All right, so. So we can't close because we do need the, the, this is part of the findings. So in some ways, we do need to we need that information. How long will it take for you to submit a revision or the response to the environmental analysis?
Sorry, I wasn't aware that that was actually required to close, close this app, but we could get it scheduled as, as soon as possible. You're saying to complete the phase two work? For?
Oh, the phase two?
This is phase two environmental.
Hazardous materials.
Oh, okay.
Which I didn't, we weren't aware that that was part of the.
Oh, I thought it, I, I, I don't know why I thought it was parking. Okay, so it's phase two. So that's different. Okay.
We have held off submitting the revised DAS until after this hearing just to make sure that was, everything was tied together, but we were not, and we've given the status of the phase two, but we were not also believing that that had to be, that work had to be completed to close.
No, no, I was thinking the work that needed to be completed was more traffic related and, and say this is different. So therefore, um, um, yeah. The fact that it's face to related is different, so.
We are more than ready to submit the, you know, the revised EAS.
How long will it take for you to make all the corrections to the documents that been submitted, which is the site plan, the statement? And any clarification that you need on any of the reports?
Would the, I mean, as collectively, option two is the?
I, I believe the option two is the better option, and I would also strongly suggest try to accommodate as much of your deliveries and, uh, dropouts and pickups within the site. And if you can come up with a really robust program within internal of that for your residents where they can uh, use your much improved internal circulation for that. I, I think that would even go further. Uh, so that's my recommendation.
And, yeah, so I, I, my, my understanding is to clarify, I think we needed to clarify the drawing to reflect the, the extent of the, of the, the perimeter fence. I think that was one note that was pointed that needs to be corrected. And then just to make sure that the, the facts and findings are, are, are consistent throughout and pick up any and that, that's the extent of the changes.
I would probably listen to the, this hearing's recorded. I would listen to the, the hearing and, uh, rather than, um, put it together now for you.
I, I don't think the, the changes are too extensive and with two weeks or three, we could have the whole.
I would, yeah, I would say within two weeks, we could, we should be able to maybe by the end of next week submit, um, the updated documents.
I don't think we can make the June hearing because the submission, uh, I don't think you'll meet the submission deadline for the June. We only have one hearing in June, so I, I do.
When, when, when would that, that deadline be? Because I think we can push to, to get into that deadline if, if that's an option.
I think, I'm sorry, I'm Chair, this is, uh, Carlo Costanza.
Yeah.
I think it's really important, the coordination of, uh, finalizing the, uh, the hazmat review with the phase two because it must be conducted, it must be submitted to DEP and, uh, reviewed. I don't know ultimately what it will, uh, if there's any other requirements like a rapid chasp or anything like that, but we, we should discuss that to, to just determine timing.
Okay. Okay, um. So I, and I was told the June deadline was, is past, so, um, June is not submission, right, the submission deadline. So I, I, July is a possibility, but for that you need to coordinate with everybody here at BSA and at, um, DEP for the phase two. Uh, I would recommend that we close because the substantive nature of all the elements that we are looking for, especially the findings have been met. So I feel, uh, I would recommend that we close the hearing. Keep the record open for all the corrections and any submissions that anybody wants to make from public. And, uh, and then, um, our office will reach out to your office in coordinating a, uh, closing date, uh, sorry, a de- decision date. Okay, is there any timeline with regards to, uh, your, um, um, funding? That I need to be aware of?
I think the, I think the timeframe that you've, you've laid out are, are, are workable. So I think we'll, I think we can well, I think July is, i- i- is fine.
Okay, all right. But a huge part of the burden lies on your team to get everything done perfectly. So we can minimize the back and forth.
Yeah. Um, just, just in so much as there is some coordination with D O D P. While we, we should commit to a date there. We have to kind of.
I would suggest, Mr. Roble, that you talk to Mr. Costanza and coordinate all of that.
Perfect.
It would be a better off discussion. Okay. Um, all right, I make a motion to close. Chair Shanda?
Hi.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, um, everybody from public and the applicants team for your participation and your thorough consideration on this, uh, project.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, it's one thirty-five PM and none of my fellow board members have eaten anything. So we need to go on a lunch break. Yeah, uh, uh, let's meet at two o'clock. Thank you, thank you, Rupert.
Okay.
Mike, so.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to like put on the record.
Hello, everyone. We are back on the record. Ms. Matthias, is your mic on?
Uh, with this mic. You've trained me not to have the mic on and now I keep forgetting to turn it on. Good afternoon. This is the Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for May 23rd, 2023. We'll resume with the zoning calendar, item number 25, 2022, 32BZ, 474 Oakdale Street, Staten Island.
I think this is Mr. Dale.
Todd Dale.
I see Mr. Dale.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Is there anybody else from your team?
It is just me today. Thank you.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm tell the truth, that do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? Or do we respond on as to the board member questions?
I do so affirm.
Please state your name for the record and proceed. You've heard the board's comments. Please respond.
Yes. Good afternoon. Todd Dale for the applicant. I did listen to comments and review session. I'll speak to them and then we can follow up and submission as required. Believe there were two primary issues discussed. The first, I just want to confirm, it appeared near the end of your session, the board was satisfied, but I want to confirm the board is satisfied with the self-created hardship issue, the D-finding and the ownership of the site. Just to, just to restate, these two sites are not in common ownership. There is a principle of shared ownership, but they are not in common ownership. In the statement that was submitted as part of the most recent submission, does have a note in there confirming that the sites were separately owned on December 15th, 1961, and at the time of filing for permit, which would qualify for the pre-existing small lot exception of 2333. So that is noted in the statement. I'm happy to answer any questions about that now before moving on to the next item. But I don't know if that helps.
You know, I would say right now, go ahead with your statement because I have to open the statement of findings and just confirm that. But I, I will go with actually what the other commissioners have stated because they, they also reviewed all the documents.
If you are, are opening the statement, I would just note that I believe it's on page one in a footnote where clarifies the qualification for 2333. So that might help be located. The next primary issue that came up was regarding the front yard. And I would just say right now, what I would do is I'll speak to that issue now. And then we'll follow up with anything additionally as required that would help the board to help supplement the record. And I would just note that we did not provide the front yard study because sets a little bit different than other applications for which we provided study. We weren't sure of the benefit of such a study, but that said, we'll provide anything that the board might require. But what I think might be helpful is if I have the ability to share screen. Let me see. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go to Google Maps. And I believe you should see now an overhead view of the site from Google Maps. And I'll just speak to it a little bit. And again, we can follow up in submission with everything, but I just wanted to point out a couple of the points now first. The first was is that generally on the block, the reason is is that everything on this block front does have a, what appears to be a compliant 20-foot front yard. Everything on this side and all the lots on this side, but for two lots. This lot over here at the corner of Oakdale and Preston, because it's a corner lot, this home does appear to be a little bit less than 20 feet, but we need to take a look. I did some initial review and it looks like it's about 12, I believe, because of the orientation. So the fact is, the proposed development, definitely the proposed 10-foot front yard would be less than the 20-foot front yard of the adjacent homes. However, there was thought and consideration that went into design and we believe that the location would be the best and it's for a couple of reasons. First, if you look at the site, even though there is a distance of what, what's proposed would create a distance of 30 feet from the existing home, which is here on Lot 8, where my cursor is. The 10-foot rear yard that's proposed, if that were reduced, then we would get within 30 feet of this existing building. But more so than that, there is an existing garage, which you can see where my cursor is right here, where they, they access it from Ross Lane. There's an existing garage. So even though a garage would be a permitted obstruction, the thought was is that if we pinch it into that corner even more, because of the because of the presence of the garage, not only would it be less than 30 feet from this existing home, but it would be closer to this garage. And there is also, I'm going to zoom in a little bit here. These two sheds would be removed as part of the development, but there is an additional shed that the adjacent home has right in that corner too. So there's this existing garage and this existing shed. So essentially shifting the home back on the subject lot would not only make it less than 30 feet to this existing home, but you're really moving closer to structures, whether they're permitted or obstructions or not. So that was why the 10-foot was provided, provide the 30-foot minimum distance between the existing home and the proposed building.
I thought it said in the statement of facts that it was a 36-foot distance, which is why I assumed there was some wiggle room.
Okay. Well, I'll take a look. And you know what I, I realized is I'm actually, I don't know if I'm, let me see if I can share my screen. I'll show you what. Or if you've got the plans in front of you, what I realized is that there may, I think we did put 36 in the statement of facts, but I realized that that is a bit incorrect because if you look at the proposed plans, you'll see that it's, there's a an angle to that existing home. So to one of the corners of the home, it's 36 feet, but to the other corner, it's 30 feet. So we can, we can correct that in, in submission. So I would say between 30 and 35 feet, but we do have, as you said, a little wiggle room to the westernmost angle of this home, which is right here. Where I'm showing on the screen, this would be the 36 feet, but this would be 30 feet, this angle right here. So it's sort of a mix with that angle. So you are correct. The statement said that, but I think that we were trying to, we were focusing on this, this eve here.
Okay. Could you, can you please update the dimensions on the plan? Plus the actual dimension of that corner site that you indicated and the depth of that front yard.
Yeah, we'll, we'll clarify that it's the angle. We'll point out those two angles. Okay. With respect to the comment on the street profile, and I apologize for any confusion, but I think visually it's easier to show what we were trying to describe is that even though this would be a 10-foot front yard, it actually would be less of an effect on the existing street file of Oakdale for two factors. First, this home here at the corner, which again is accessible through Ross Lane here, has an existing garage that would be, it's roughly 10 or 11 feet from the, the street line. So the home would actually be in profile with this existing garage, which again I realize is a, you know, primitive obstruction of the structure, but visually it creates consistency. And the other thing too is that this whole grassed area here that's overgrown as part of the development would be paved and improved. So Oakdale will be widened, this existing sidewalk will be extended. So even though this home would be closer to the street line that would end up, visually it would actually create a much more even Oakdale Street, we think would be a benefit to the community as a whole, because you wouldn't have this strange grassy, you know, outcropping here that exists. There's actually, if, if you recall, this portion here is actually owned by the city as a tax lot that's in the middle of Oakdale. But the short answer is this being removed and this structure being here create a much more even profile with this 10-foot proposed front yard, even though it is, you know, admittedly less than the compliant 20-foot front runs there. So I'll, I'll stop. Let me see if I can figure out how to stop sharing the screen. There we go. But I hope that that helps clarify a little bit of what we were trying to present in, in, in our submission. I'm happy to answer any questions about that. And as I said, we can, we can add additional letter. We could go to a full study, but I'm, I'm not sure, as I said, based on that, how much the study would help, but we'll, we'll, we'll submit anything to the record that would help address concerns of the board in addition and beyond Commissioner Yun's request to update the statement to note the 30-foot minimum distance between that line.
I think Vice Chair Shabeta had a question.
It was, it's related to your initial statement that there was a footnote on page five of your statement of facts and findings. I am on page five. I do not see a footnote.
Page one, I'm sorry if I said, I thought I said page one. At the very bottom of page one, there's a footnote that says the subject zoning law complies with the provisions of zoning resolution 2333. Special business development existing lots is it was owned separately individually on December 15th, 1961, and the date of application for the building permit.
Thank you.
Nice. Okay.
Mr. Dale, can you at least diagram an aerial photograph showing a front, the front yard depths?
A hundred percent. We can, so what we'll do is we will, we will amend the statement to include the full dimension, dimension statement. And what we can do is we can submit a couple of aerial photographs based on what I just showed to help diagram what we believe will be a consistent frontage. So aerial photograph.
I, I have to say, I mean, this is, this is a very unusually pinched site from, not only from the rear, but also from this, and the angle of it. So I while, you know, the depth of the rear yard from the building on, I think it's Lot 8, right?
Yes. Lot 8 is existing home to the rear.
Right. That varies. I mean, as I'm looking at the plan, it there, it changes from its rear yard. The depth varies from 19.25 to 25.38. And maintaining at least a 10-foot distance would give that total 30-foot of a buffer between the two buildings. But you know, if you want to maintain that complete 30-foot buffer, one way would be to keep moving, shifting the building plane, the proposed building plane in, to maintain that 10-foot. But that doesn't result in always the best layout of the space and and I, I think your point is well taken that the driveway to that garage on Lot 8 is right along the property line. So to provide some element of buffer and privacy for the proposed building, maintaining a distance a little bit more than 10 feet would be a better outcome for the proposed development. And now that results in having the building shift forward towards the street line. So I think the aerial was interesting. Typically, the building that you were talking about, that extends into the front yard. That's a corner lot. So the corner lot is required to have two front yards and the front yard depths vary for one. One has to be a minimum of 10, the other one has to be 15 or something. I don't know what's the regulation here. I can't recall it off the top of my head. So even though this is not a corner lot, it is almost the end of the that last building almost on that block front. And it is mostly laid in a similar layout as the building that is at the corner of, what is, I, I'm trying to.
Ross Lane, I believe, Oakdale and Ross Lane.
Cross Lane? Okay.
Uh, yeah.
It's like the bookend in some sense of this block, even though it's a 4-1 and you're, because of the angle, your angle, you're forced to kind of lay out the building, not depth-wise, but length-wise. So I, I, I'm okay with it, but I do think it would, for the record, we should have that study, the, the, the aerial with the diagram indicating. And if you could also indicate what the required front yard depths are and how much is being provided. So that way we have it for the record. I, I think from what you showed today, I am, I think it meets the neighborhood character based on the way I'm reviewing the entire block frontage and the way it's situated compared to all the other buildings. But for the documentation, we need all that. And I would say you should also add that into your narrative.
Understood. Yes, we can definitely update the statement. We'll provide the aerial that we just showed here. You know, so it's on the record and just make sure that the statement reflects that. So we can definitely submit those two items.
All right. Any, any other Commissioner Yun?
That, that's fine. I mean, I, I think it's been typical, at least in my short tenure here, that when we, when someone is asking for a front yard, side yard, or bulk, or height setback, rear yard, open space, waiver or a reduction, they usually provide that contextual study. And so it's usually, it's a very typical thing that seems to be asked for quite often, and we did ask for it last time. So just, it's pretty typical for the record.
Yes, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Yun. And we do need to, we need that for the record and in the statement of narrative as to why this is the only possible solution for this development.
For that matter, for that matter, a rear yard was a waiver that was requested.
Oh, yes. Yes.
So if you can include in, in your statement of facts and in that aerial, the rear yard and the requirements.
Yep. Good point. Yes.
Noted. How's this? I guess I'm a little confused as to what we could do. So I mean, we could say that we're providing a 10-foot rear yard. Essentially, every other home on here has a 30-foot rear yard, but that's because the orientation of those lots are very parallel or perpendicular. I don't know.
How about this? You use the aerial and you same aerial to show what is the required 30-foot rear yard line for all the lots, and it will cut through the subject lot, which indicates where the 30-foot rear yard would fall.
So in our aerial photograph, what we can do is we can present one, what I would say is we can present two different photos perhaps. One focused on the front yard showing where the proposed building would be. The front yards of the adjacent home fronting up Oakdale on the same block front, showing that the garage of the home to the west is comparable to the 10-foot front yard that we're proposing. And point out the garages and then maybe do a separate picture showing the rear yard. Because I don't want, I don't want it to be too busy.
I, you do need two separate studies, one for the front yard and the one for, another one for the rear yard. I didn't even use the, I would say I'm looking at your radius diagram, though the radius diagram cuts off the block 5324. It doesn't show the entirety of the lots fronting on, no, I'm looking at a different study.
What, how's this? We, we'll provide, I think in this instance, I totally understand why the record needs to have this and we're happy to provide it. I think in this particular instance, the overhead aerial is, is a clear option than perhaps just a table of figures, because I think provides more context. So we can provide two different aerial approaches, one focused on the front yard in relation to the surrounding development and one focused on the rear yard. And I think those two side by side would be better than forcing them all into a single page.
Yeah. Is that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Right. Okay. Not a problem. We'll, we'll we'll make it happen.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Dale? Let's go to the public then.
Okay. The case that we're currently discussing is 2022, 32BZ, 474 Oakdale Street, Staten Island. Should you wish to discuss, please call in 646-558-8656 or our toll-free number 888-475-4499. You will enter the webinar ID number 840-663-63732 and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're in, press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is a small hand on the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
Mr. Dale, how long will it take for you to make these corrections?
Can I say it shouldn't take very long? But we want to be flexible with the board's calendar. I think a couple of weeks, but we could also, let me pass this and I leave it to the board. If the board had any consideration for closing, we could take longer to submit if that would help ease the calendar for the board. The, the concern we have is we could rush to submit, but if it were not closed, then we would want to do it sooner. And I realize everybody's asking for June. So.
June is not possible because the submission date is gone.
Would there be any consideration of closing today based on this sole issue?
I, I think the board still wanted to see some studies to substantiate the findings.
Yeah.
So I would ask the board not close.
Then I would say we would be able to submit as soon as possible based on the board's calendar, since June is not available. July, whatever the corresponding submission date is for, for July hearing.
Okay. Okay. All right. We will try to schedule something for July. We have two hearing dates in July.
Sure. Do you happen to know the submission date? I'm just trying to think of my own schedule. If, if there's a latter one in July, that actually may be better because I will be.
There is a latter one in, in July.
Yeah. The, the last week of June would be difficult for me for a submission date. So if, I think if we were able to submit early July, that would be ideal.
There's one on July 24th, 25th, and I think the submission date on that one is July 6th.
That would be ideal. So there you go. Someone's asking for the later July day and not the earlier one.
You are so accommodating.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next item. Oops, my calendar is closed. Item number 26, 2022, 59BZ, 591 East Fordham Road, Dubrox. That is Mr. Beckerman. Is anyone else? Let's change the screen, Mr. Daniels. Mr. Beckerman?
Yes. Can you?
Hi. Is anyone else in your team? Oh, now he's muted.
How, how am I doing now?
Oh, you're good. We, we can see you. Good afternoon, sir. Is there anyone else with you on your team or anything?
No, no.
No? Okay. All righty. Let me raise your right hand. Just let me sway you in. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? And to respond on is it a board member questions?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record and proceed and address the board's comments.
Stuart Beckerman. Hirschen Singer at Epstein on behalf of the applicant. Good afternoon, Chair, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So we could do everything that the board has requested. We'll produce an affidavit from the tenant indicating that there'll be no sale of cars on the premises. We will, within the next couple of weeks, we'll install a fabric so that the fence is 100% opaque. We are, we will remove the framework for barbed wire. We'll smooth the asphalt, which I'm told has been done already. We, we will do striping as indicated on the plans. We, I, I, we will remove the, the blade sign, but I just want to just point, give some context to the blade sign, just so you appreciate why the tenant is resisting on this is that the, if you look at the 1996 photos with the application from 97 rather, the sign is there. But the condition of the, of the resolution was that comply with sign regulations and comply with the approved plan. So the sign, for whatever reason, is not on the approved plans. I don't know why. So that's kind of the dilemma I'm in. So I'm just putting that out there, but I took another look at the regulations. I don't see how we do comply, so we will have the sign removed. I just wanted to put that out there because
Yep.
Was not happy, but but, but, but I would just like to add that as we've requested and as the board has done previously, if you could just add a condition that will give him, give the tenant the option to put up new signage as long as it complies with the C port 56 sign regulations.
This is C four, C four five D.
C four five D, excuse me, I'm sorry.
The, the board doesn't approve the copy on the sign if that's what you're asking.
Right, I also need to know what exactly the requirements of the C four five D is, uh, because it would, if anything, it would only be applicable to the frontage of.
Correct, that's, and remember, the, the uh, the establishment here is oriented entirely towards the commercial district. Uh, in the rear, there's no entrance. Uh, there's just a parking lot screened with a fence and landscaping, that's it. So the signage would only be within the C four five D. And we're simply asking for permission to install, and this was a, a, a condition of the prior grant as well. So just any signs would have to comply. Actually, the prior grant, I think, said uh comply with C one regulations. I, well, whatever it is, if we're just given the ability to put up new signage, if they so wish, that's, that's all I'm asking for. And.
I, I'm just looking at the regulations, uh.
Well, I could tell you that in this case, the reason why our sign would not comply, we comply with height. The problem is that uh uh, a sign that cannot project more than a, a double sided sign in this case can't project, I think, more than eighteen inches. And this sign appears to exceed that.
Okay.
So if we could put in a, if they want a blade sign and it complies, we, if you want us to put a proposal in there now, I can ask them to put something together.
What was the prior board grant on this one with regards to signage?
Uh, it said, uh, I think I have it right here. I think what it said was that it comply with plans or with, I think they said C one district regulations. Uh, and I just can't. I have to look for that, hold on, um, here we go. So what it says is I have it right here.
So just so I understand, the current sign extends beyond the property line?
It, it projects, it, the blade sign projects.
Now, none of the regulations will, I mean, depending, doesn't matter whether I recommend C four or C one or C two. Pursuant to section thirty-two dash six five three, no illuminated sign may be displayed on awning or canopies permitted by the administrative code with a surface area of not exceeding twelve square feet and with the height of letter not exceeding, exceeding twelve inches. No, any commercial copy of any such sign shall be limited to the identification of the name and address on the building or establishment contained therein.
You're looking at uh section?
Thirty-two, six, five, three.
Thirty-two, six, five, three.
And it says sign may be displayed on marquee permitted by administrative code, but uh, so there's uh, and then another one that says eighteen inches permitted projection in all other commercial district and that includes C four also and C one, C two, it is indicated except as otherwise provided. Uh, no permitted signs shall project across the street line more than eighteen inches for a double or multi face sign or twelve inch for any other sign, so I'm not sure it gets you anything by allowing a C four other than more signage and I don't think this is an area that you need to have more signage, you um, you have uh for, for the use that you have.
Okay, if I may, so thirty-two, six, fifty-three only applies to signs on marquees or uh, marquees and awnings or canopies, so the applicable regulation is the one you last mentioned, which was thirty-two, six, five, two, which says that a, a permitted sign shall project across the street line. Uh, no project, no, no more than uh, right, eighteen inches for a double or multifaceted sign, which is what this is, and that's why we.
Right, which is permitted in a C one also, it is so it, it doesn't change for any of the zoning districts.
So I'm, I'm just asking for permission to do a sign that come, you know, subject to Buildings Department approval that it complies with the sign regulations within the underlying district, that's all I'm asking for.
Okay, um, so I just kind of want to make sure the board is fully aware, um, in this case, uh, the prior board grant had a condition of C one and C one has a requirement of for interior lot, which in this case are are through lot, but in this case, we don't want any signage on, on the uh, on the other street frontage, so hundred and fifty square foot. Uh, it would be along Fordham Road, whereas C four would allow five hundred square foot. Um, that's a lot of signage for this frontage. And what's your current signage require, that you have? I think you um, did you provide a signage analysis study?
I think so, we do, because we were required to.
Right, I know, I, I, I'm just looking for it.
So all I'm asking is, uh, you know, so what you're saying is that you think the regulations may be more permissive than you're comfortably allowing? Just so I understand.
Well, I, what I'm trying to understand, what is the current amount of uh signage you have on the site? And, and that's really what I'm trying to.
I see, so.
And I don't see the signage analysis sheet uh in this submission package.
Okay, I know we should have it. Yeah, here we go, I see it's the original. I just don't know if we subsequently amended it, but I just want to confirm we might have. Yeah, so right, so we did a, a side analysis uh here and we're showing that, can I share it or I don't even know if I?
Yes, yes, please do.
Uh, so how do I share it? I uh.
Okay, so I see you have now you're proposing two hundred and fifty-one square.
This was in December, we, we, December, we submitted uh an updated sign.
I see it now, yes, two hundred and fifty-one square feet is the total surface area that is proposed. And the non-illuminated is hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and seventy-one square feet and illuminated is eighty square feet. And um the zoning resolution uh allows in a C four five hundred square foot in a C one and C two allows one fifty.
So we're showing here a total of square footage for the entire premises, four hundred fifteen square feet. We're showing uh a total surface area of two fifty-one, of which one seventy-one is uh, non-illuminated, so that would mean I'm just trying to go through it as we talk.
Okay.
So that, that's basically what we're showing here. Right, and we're showing eighty square feet of illuminated, correct?
What is the surrounding radius? I, I just want to look at the surrounding use on East Fordham Road.
I mean, are you suggesting that more signage might be inappropriate? I'm just trying to understand your position. Uh, you know, we are, in my view, you know, this is an area, even though currently it's not an order related. The zoning doesn't, isn't auto-related anymore, but there are still vestiges of that, including our property and the property next door, the, the gas station. But aside from that, um, you know, there's a small amount of additional permitted signage, it looks like.
I'm going to um, ask the Commissioners, what, what is their take? Currently, the zoning district along, along East Fordham Road is C four five D district, which allows, as I mentioned, uh, non-illuminated sign of five hundred square foot.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I need to, it's four hundred fifteen, we're allowed a total of four fifteen. So when you say five hundred, that's a, a maximum, you know, but we're limited by the, by the by the frontage of our lot, so that we're limited to four hundred fifteen square feet.
That's right, thank you for that correction. So you're allowed maximum four hundred fifteen square foot of illuminated and non-illuminated. Um, the current zoning district is C four five. Do the, um, the prior board had put a limit of C one. What, was the area recently rezoned to C?
Yes, it was C eight and then it was rezoned to C four five D. Uh, I think about ten or ten years ago or so. I don't recall exactly when, but it wasn't that long ago.
This was a reinstatement, not an amendment as well, right?
It's a reinstatement.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I just, I would like to, maybe this would be of assistance, so I think historically the board looks at some of these pre nineteen sixty-one uses when they changed to other non-conforming uses, uh, they look at fifty-two, uh, thirty-one, which is where the C one limitation is placed. Um, but I think in, in an instance like this, it's the underlying zoning that drives the sign requirement unlike uh, some of the other applications we see. I just wanted to clarify jurisdictionally if, if there's any confusion.
Right, and I would just point at just adding to what Carlo just said. You know, if this were a non-conforming use that was not subject to a VSA variance, we would be governed by the C four five D sign regulations.
Uh, Mr. Executive Director, uh, would this, because this is a reinstatement and not an amendment, would he need to file for amendment for, to conform to the C four five D?
No, because the signage in this instance is not necessarily before us, other than at the discretion of the board. Uh, obviously, the board in, in continuing what is in essence a non-conforming use still here. Um, you know, could, could uh guide the applicant to, to whatever it, it feels uh uh, would be fit here, but, but I just wanted to confirm that that C one um, limitation, that's a, a, a common theme among many non-conforming uses is is really when, and when a non-conforming use changes to another non-conforming use that was you know, a grant prior to nineteen sixty-one in a district like a residential district, that's where the limitation of C one. Uh, typically, if, if the use is still non-conforming, but it's in, within a district that um has sign requirements, then, you know, at, at most, it must adhere to those sign requirements. If this was, for example, uh, C one zoning district, right, uh, or a C two zoning district, we would say cannot exceed the C two zoning district requirements in that instance. But I just wanted to clarify that it appears that the board may have just used a template language at some point, referring to C one where perhaps this was always in excess of C one.
Okay.
Um, you know, and, and I'm not sure, uh, Mr. Beckman, not to confuse the record, but you stated that at some point this actually was a C eight district?
Right, this was a C eight and then it was rezoned a few years ago to a C four five D.
Which is interesting, okay.
Yeah, I think they were looking to create more development opportunities along this stretch of East Tremont, I mean, of East Fordham, rather.
Thank you, but I, I hope that just provided clarity to just one point.
Yes, it does, so I think it's uh, based on what you have stated and I think providing the historic classification on the zoning district change uh, underlying zoning is, is what would be applicable in this case, which would be C four five D. Okay, alright, uh, should we go to the public? Are there any questions for Mr. Beckerman? Yeah, let's go to the public, please.
So the case we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two fifty-nine BZ five ninety-one East Fordham Road, DeBronx. Should you wish to discuss, please dial in six four six five five eight eight six five six or eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. Toll free number, you will enter the webinar ID number eight four zero six six three six three seven three two and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you are on, calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is that little hand that on the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
So, Mr. Beckerman, um, how long will it take for you to make these improvements?
Well, the tenant tells me he could do it in a few days, but I would give ourselves a few weeks. So, you know, I don't think there's any urgency here, so, and I heard you talking about uh, trying to fill up a calendar in late Ju- July, I'm sure that's fine from our standpoint, it's not like we desperately need the approval to do any work, so I think we're, I, I leave it up to you. But we, we could, we could easily provide this information within a few, couple of weeks.
Okay. Um, I would uh then suggest that anyway, month of June is not possible, so it would be sometime in July, so you have whole month of June, beautiful summer month to do a lot of the good work. So please go ahead and use the month of June um, to do the work and I would recommend we close. I just want to be very clear. Um, I would want, just for the record, I would put a condition that no signage would be permitted on the hundred and nineteen street frontage, even though I mean, this, the zoning district does not extend to, um, does it extend to one nineteen? It's just a long, uh.
It's a through lot and there's uh, the front half or just a little more than half, I think, is in the C four five D. And then the back part is within the R district.
Okay, so the only.
We have no commercial activity in the R district except for parking and fully screened with no entrance at all, so there's no it's a, it's a residential block, there's some non-conforming commercial, including a pizza place next door to us, but it's it is a residential neighborhood within an R district, so there's absolutely zero, and there's no entrance, so either pedestrian or vehicular, so there's zero motivation to put any signage over there.
That's good to know. I just kind of want to, um, like Belson suspenders, I just want to put a note uh, as a condition that there shall be no signage that will be facing the residential district. Even if in future, not your, your client, future client decides to put a signage, it should not be facing the residential uh zoning district. Um, so that would be one of the conditions I would want to put in. Any other questions or comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Yun? Okay, um, then we didn't hear anything from the.
No, no, raise the hands, okay.
Alright, let's, then, um, I make a motion to close. Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shatta? Commissioner Yun?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Beckerman.
Thank you, so when uh.
We'll reach out to you for the. It will be in July, we have two hearing dates in July, uh, it can be either the second half of July, uh, which is the twenty-second, twenty-third, or it would be the first one. I think the first one will be a little too soon for you because you want to make the improvement, so I would say best would be to do it towards the end of July.
Okay, sounds good, thank you very much.
Okay, next item is item number twenty-seven twenty-two one sixty BZ one twelve one sixteen West Twenty-Eighth Street, Manhattan. And this is Ron Rosati. Can join his panelists? Thank you, Mr. Beckerman. He's still on the screen. Mr. Rosati?
Mm-hmm. Hi, good afternoon. Is anyone else joining you?
Yes, Doug Gauthier is the architect, he'll be joining.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I, I should be, yes.
Please, uh, join us, Mr. Gauthier.
Thank you. Am I, am I on? No. Yeah, Doug, put your camera on.
I did, did let him in.
Hold on.
Oh, okay. There you go. Can you put your, uh, unmute and put your video on, please, sir?
Sorry, forgive me.
You are, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you.
Okay, uh, both of you, please raise your hand, right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and none other truth in your testimony before this board, and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Affirm.
For the record and proceed, and please respond to the commu- the commissioner's comments.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioners, Madam Chair, Ron Rosati, representing the applicant. Uh, I heard your comments earlier today, and to take notes, we'll be addressing them all in writing, including updating the A finding to analyze sites in the M one six zone that are co-owned with adjacent sites, uh, as well as providing height and street wall studies to supplement the C finding, uh, to show that the proposal is in character, uh, with the area, uh, in addition to addressing all the other comments heard. Unfortunately, Barbara Cohen can't attend, uh, due to a medical emergency, uh, but she did attend the review session, uh, and we will be revising the financials to provide a response, uh, to those comments that were heard. Uh, we'll utilize Marshall and Swift, uh, for the as-of-right and for the proposed scenarios, and we'll supplement that with, uh, independent cost estimates as directed by the board. Uh, Doug Gauthier is here, he is the project architect, and he can speak to some of the questions that were heard regarding stairway location and circulation, uh, as well as the overall, the design of the building, so Doug, um, can you please address some of those comments?
Yeah, well, I think the board, I think the board, um, at the end, understood the movement of the staircase. The, the staircase, by moving it to the new building, it, one, it stabilizes the new, it provides shear for the new building, and it provides an open circulation, um, for the, um, for the, though, and, and maximizes the room, room layouts. The, um, um, the existing, yeah, and, and, and they also correctly, um, understood that the, the stairway is not, um, not really a load-bearing, uh, stairway. Most of the, the, the load-bearing and sheer wall is wrapped around the elevators. So, to, it, it's, it's an, we think it's an efficient, uh, move to remove the stair and, and, and build a new one to support the new structure.
Okay.
And, um, the height, the height, you, you mentioned the height, which was a, a surprise to us, but we, we, we simply, everything is tall in that neighborhood, we're maximizing the height, and what is not really clear in the elevations, but is, is true in the massing, is that the massing of the, of the addition is, is responsive to the, uh, existing building. Um, we'd be happy to look at that again.
The, the proposed building is taller than the existing portion of the hotel, um, um, and I'm not.
Yes, the exist, the, the existing hotel has a two-story mechanical space, so we, we buy, buy, we have a one-story mechanical space in the new building, so we just, we brought it, we brought the facade, we brought the height up, that's why it has an extra floor compared to the other building, but the massing is, is similar.
Um. Well, um.
Shall I share my screen?
Yeah, please do.
Thank you. Um. Come here. Okay, does that show? Are we seeing that?
Yes.
So the, the first setback matches, uh, uh, matches the height of the overall building, and then our setbacks come back to, um, to, to the mechanical space that's in gray up here. So I think you might be, you might have an issue with this.
One of the setback has units, so the first setback has, uh, hotel suites.
This, uh, this setback has hotel suites, this one is mechanical. And then the, this is two stories of mechanical on the, um, on the existing building.
Uh, I, I definitely, you know, the way the building is designed, um, the narrowness of it gets enhanced, uh, uh, with that additional height, and there is nothing wrong in it being sh- equal and shorter than the existing building, it doesn't have to, I mean, I think more importantly, we, we try to balance out with the findings, um, A, B are very critical component, and they are also addressing the C, therefore, so it has to be minimum necessary, and your financials, until we see the financials also, it would be difficult for us to say, I mean, I, I think from the context point of view, I definitely don't think it needs to be taller than the existing building. Um, you, you can eliminate the suite and bring the mechanical height, uh, one down, and that's okay. Uh, but definitely from a financing point of view, um, I think there is room, um, for it to be even less than, uh, in terms of the height that is being proposed. That is just my take on it.
No, I, I certainly agree with you, Chair, and talking about the, uh, massing and size and the height of this is certainly putting the carriage before the horse.
Yep.
Um. I, I, I understand, um, I'm, you know, simply responding to the client's request for as many rooms as possible.
I, I appreciate that, although we have to meet the findings to, uh, so that we can see what would be appropriate considering the hardship.
It has to be a minimum necessary.
I see, understood.
Right, not maximum permitted.
Just clarify, I, this is Commissioner Shatta, uh, we don't have the financials yet, so I would just like reiterate that the maximum that could be done, based on character.
Commissioner Shatta, could you please speak closer to the microphone?
Sorry, Doug, better?
Yeah.
Yeah, the maximum that building, that proposed building could go is the height of the adjacent existing building, but based on the financials, even if, if we believe that it need to be shorter, it might be shorter, just, just to make this clear. We don't have the financials yet.
So the financials will determine the height, right?
So what happens is, they show a hardship, and they come to us and they ask us to make them whole from their hardship, and then we give the minimum possible to make them whole from their hardship. And that is how we, uh, well, there are three other steps in between this, but that is how we come to a variance. So I, I think it'd be premature to speak of this now, especially when we haven't had, uh, a, um, a a hardship study that is properly, um, addresses the uniqueness.
Okay.
I, I don't think, as I think both, uh, Commissioner Shatta and I stated, I think the starting point, the minimum would be the existing height of the existing building from a neighborhood, but then it's, that is this absolute starting point, and after that, it's more of a reduction.
You, you mean?
You mean the maximum?
Yeah.
That, that is the maximum, sorry.
The maximum would be.
That is the max, I'm, I'm looking at from top down, sorry, yes, that's the maximum, but it, based on the financing, it can be, we would look at what is the minimum that would be needed, and if that requires reducing some of the floors, that it may come to that.
And, and, and.
Go ahead.
I'm, I can't say for certain, but, uh, at least in my opinion, I don't think it's going to reach the maximum height of being at the same height as the other building.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think it's one of those type of variances from, from what I, from what I say, I may be wrong, but I do believe that this is gonna be a smaller, I, I, I do believe I'd be much more comfortable with a smaller project, but again, we'll see when, when we get all the financials.
And the reason I asked for the height and setback study was more for the street wall point of view, because as, uh, um, there was another project that the board had recently approved, that is, uh, to the west of the existing hotel, in that, uh, a contact study was done to see what is the predominant built street wall height. And in that case, the street wall height was lowered, because the, the proposal was asking, uh, was, uh, initial proposal for a continuous street wall height up to, uh, a certain, uh, height more than what we felt was consistent with the neighborhood context. So then, there is, uh, as part of that study, there was a street wall identified, uh, and, and the street wall height was lowered, and then a setback, but that's a residential use. Whether that kind of treatment is viable on the, on a hotel site, and that to an extension of an existing hotel, is also an argument that you need to make, and Mr. Rosati, I, I think you understand what I'm stating, uh, that, that's an argument you need to make towards, even though if there, should you find a context, even though, even though there is, it, how it would be difficult for you to match the floor plate and expansion-wise, and, and how, uh, from a financing point of view, and the marketability, those are the arguments that you may have to present. But that's for you to justify, but, um, but once you do that study.
Totally understand, Commissioners, we'll look into that and, and respond.
Uh, any other questions from any of the commissioners? Okay, let's go to the public then.
Thank you.
So the case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-one sixty B Z, one twelve, one sixteen, West Twenty-Eighth Street, Manhattan. Should you wish to discuss, please dial in six four six five five eight eight six five six, and the toll-free number eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine. You will enter webinar ID number eight four zero six six three six three seven three two, and the pound sign. At the next prompt, you will enter the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to unmute, star six to unmute to, sorry, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already and wish to participate in discussion of this application, please, uh, raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand on the bottom of your computer screen, and once you are permitted in, you will have three minutes in which to discuss.
I had a question for you, um, a question that was raised by Community Board Five, excuse me, regarding the ownership, uh, can you please clarify that?
Sure, we did submit, um, deeds for the site and the adjacent sites, um, didn't, didn't, and I apologize. Um, it didn't show that it was in the same ownership, it was a different LLC name, but we'll, we'll clarify that.
And, uh, also, the question that Vice Chair Shabeta had raised regarding, um, exercising, uh, staff. Of the, the admin.
Yeah, um, I'll have to address that in writing, I apologize, you'll probably hear my son in the background, um, crying, so, um, I'll have to, uh, submit that, uh, response in, in writing, I apologize.
Okay, yes. How long will it take for you to make these corrections, and I, I think it's.
Uh, eight weeks approximately.
Eight weeks, okay.
Yeah, eight weeks, thank you.
So we're looking at, uh, August, yeah. Definitely. August, if not September, yeah. Okay. All right, um, thank you. Thank you for your appearance, and wish you all the best.
Uh, to members of the public who are in our waiting room, if you did not, uh, hear your case being called to testify, um, or if your case was on another day, please, uh, email all comments to submit@bsa.nyc.gov, that's submit, S U B M I T, at bsa.nyc.gov.
Yes, and if I could add to what, what General Counsel just said, if, if, uh, it would be very helpful in the subject matter to include the, the BSA calendar number and, and the address of the property, so that we can ensure that it's made part of the record.
Okay, this concludes the public hearing from May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Thank you all.
Thank you.
You beat me to it. It's a stuff like four people left in there, it's like, nobody's raising their hands.
Still recording.
Oops, sorry.